2021, regular meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education is called to order. Present, we have Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Pitko, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Mrs. Vitale, Superintendent Cummings, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxine Cunelli, Mr. Peterson, and Ms. Guernsey. I ask you to all please rise, and Ms. Pitko, will you lead us in the pledge? Hi, everybody. It's nice to see everybody. I'm sorry that we started a little bit late. We're moving right on to public comment. If any members of the public would like to give comment, I invite you to come forward. It'll be two minutes per person. I'm just asking you to please state your name and address for the record.
Hello? Hi, my name's Domingo Stefanti, 226 Home Fair. So I'm here today again because I read the joint letter from the Board of Education to the governor, and I want to say thank you for that. Thank you for advocating for our kids. You know, my feedback on it, the letter began well. I thought the beginning was very nice, but the recommendations from the governor fell flat on me, honestly speaking. The letter settles on allowing vaccinated people to be excluded from the mandate, but where does that leave elementary school kids like my daughter? You know, frankly speaking, the individual letters that I've read from some board members were more aligned with my position than the joint letter from the Board of Education. I assume that's because there are differing views on the topic amongst the board. So I had some questions for those who have some concerns. First, why should any child have to vaccinate in order to walk around mask-free, given the current low risk within the state of Connecticut and the low risk for children in general? Second, how was England able to go mask-free without social distance guidelines through the 2020-2021 school year and without vaccinations? The third question I have is, how did we settle on the flu? How do we handle the flu before this, and why wasn't it a talking point? I searched the Fairfield Board of Education page and only found content regarding influenza or COVID-19 starting in July of 2020. Just to be clear on my stance and the stance of many parents across the globe, the country, the state, and in the town of Fairfield, we need to go back to normal, unmask our kids, remove social distancing guidelines, and let our kids behave like humans. That's all I have.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward?
Hi, my name is Sarah Nosarino. I'm at 529 Davis Road. Good evening. I've come to speak tonight from the perspective of a would-be FPS parent. I have a beautiful, smart, kind, empathetic, fun, five-year-old daughter who's going to be going into kindergarten this fall. In 2014, my husband and I bought our first home right down the street from our neighborhood school so we could be walkers. We were planting the roots for all of our Fairfield family dreams to grow, and we are doing so around our town schools. Fast forward to today and the 2021 school year ahead, and I will be driving my daughter every single day right past North Stratfield, all the way across town to a lovely private school that I'm privileged to be able to send her to. She will be going to her first day of kindergarten with her beautiful, smiling face shining for the world to see. She'll be greeted with a hug and a smile by her teachers. She'll be able to play with friends at whatever distance they like. She'll be learning to read without the hindrance of a mask. She'll be able to breathe during those hot first few weeks of school, and she will walk freely around her new classroom. She'll be eating lunch right next to all of her friends. She'll be able to be the five-year-old little schoolgirl that every single kid in our town deserves a chance to be, and she'll be doing it safely. Currently, the CDC says that children age zero to four and five to 17 are hospitalized at a rate of .5 and .2 respectively per 100,000 from COVID. Put simply, this means that children have at best a .0002 percent chance and at worst, a .0005 percent chance of hospitalization due to COVID.
Just finish your sentence and then...
Sure. Kids will be back to being kids in the 34 states that have ended their school mask mandates, countless counties, countries worldwide that never masked them, in our neighboring towns like Newtown, Old Lime, Groton, and Sinsbury, and even my daughter's town.
Thank you.
When will we stand up for our kids in Fairfield? Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Kristin Bellvender. I live at 88 Home Fair Drive. Apparently, it's a vocal street. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to address you. I was happy to see that finally, as a unified board, you're transparently voicing your opinion in defense of our children by writing a letter to Governor Lamont. I have a couple of concerns regarding the content of your letter. First, you've put requests for ending the mask mandate side by side with the request for a state-run remote option, both of which should be supported by the board, but they should be looked at as separate entities. In terms of the need for a state-run remote option, this will be needed regardless of masking practices. There'll be students next year who have compromised immune systems or families with compromised immune systems that school will not be a safe place for them regardless of mask use. Mask use in school needs to end. There are currently 34 states who have removed the mask mandates for schools, including neighboring Massachusetts. When you place the request for the end of mask mandates simultaneously with the request for a remote option, you're implying that removing masks makes schools less safe. At our current rate of infection, vaccination rates, it's no longer true. Our state continues to place the burden of this pandemic on its most fragile and helpless population. Your strong voice needs to be heard loud and clear in Hartford. In order to make schools accessible and safe for all, including the mental health and social implications of continued mask wearing, you need to separate these two components into separate letters. They are their own separate issues that require their own separate actions. I'd also like to address the caveat in your letter that states the possibility of only removing masks for high school. I have children that encompass all three levels of schools, and I find that to be extremely problematic. You lose credibility, and your letter falls flat on strength of argument when you hedge with that. All students should be given the choice to wear masks or not. Can you imagine families whose high schooler can go unmasked while their middle-schooler and elementary school students continue to have to wear them?
Yep. Thank you. If there is more, you can submit it via email.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hey, everyone. My name is Caroline Steeber, and I live at 59 Parkwood Road with my husband and three daughters. My eldest is headed to kindergarten at Hollent Hill in the fall, and my three-year-old will be starting preschool. I'm speaking not only in behalf of my daughters, but advocating for all students and teachers and administrators in our town. I lived in Fairfield my entire life, besides college outside Boston. I knew I wanted to settle here, not only because it's an amazing place to raise a family, but because the schools are among the best in the country. It seems we're past the point of needing to share the copious amounts of data of why masks need to be removed in schools. Instead, I just wanted to make a couple of short comments, which I hope represent how other families might be feeling. The first is the fact that the majority of adults in our community are resuming their pre-COVID normal lives for our children who have three out of 100,000 hospitalization rate or mandated to wear masks in school. I am asking why we are continuing to put the needs of our children last. Elementary years are critically important for a child still learning to speak clearly, read, socialize, discover their unique personality and talents. These years represent the foundation to their development and are so vital in shaping who they will become as adults. My next comment is that regardless of what the governor and the State Department of Health advise, the Fairfield Board of Ed needs to vote forward a unified policy statement reflecting what the vast majority of the Fairfield community's clear stance on this issue is. Masks should be optional in Fairfield schools in the fall. It represents, the stance represents what is right and safe based on all the information we have from the past 15 months and reflects our current situation. Finally, whether you're supportive or against continuing the mask mandates for our children, I respect you. I genuinely believe all of us want the same thing, the best possible educational experience for our children and the entire school community, one that is safe, nurturing, academically competitive, and supports the social and educational needs of all children. Masks need to be made optional in our Fairfield schools in the fall.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Caitlin Jimbalvo. I live at 47 Geneva Terrace. And I wanted to mention something that we've been seeing in the emails, the daily emails from Mike Cummings this year, a statement that our children are, their safety is the top priority, which I can respect the sentiment behind that, but I challenge the reality of that statement. Every day, we either put our kids on the bus or drive them to school. They eat at school and risk choking. We, this summer, many of us will bring our kids swimming. There are many risks that we encounter every day, and individually and as families, we do a cost-benefit analysis to assess those risks and what the benefits are in encountering them. So with medical interventions, there's really nothing different. A cost-benefit analysis is conducted when they are implemented, when they are produced, when they are approved by FDA or whoever else is involved. Couple things are important. Efficacy is one, and like I've said before, and I'm sure you've heard a million times, there is no medical consensus on the efficacy of masks. The other is safety. So that ties into what we've heard from Mr. Cummings this year. There are no studies done on the safety for children. There are no standards of safety for masks for children, especially cotton ones, which is what they're mostly wearing. And in fact, you probably heard this last week, the study that parents sent their kids' masks to a lab, a private lab, that came back with a number of dangerous pathogens, bacterial and viral. It's very surprising that the CDC has not done that analysis in the last year and a half. Until this detailed cost-benefit analysis is conducted and masks are proven without a shadow of a doubt to mitigate the spread of viruses and also prove or pose no physical and emotional risk to children, they should not be mandated. Never. Not contingent on community metrics. If we cannot show our children how to think critically, then how can we expect them to ever learn how to do so?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Hi, everybody. Meg Kelleher. I live at North Cedar Road, and I too want to thank you for your letter to the governor. It looks like we don't have anything concrete to go on and may need to continue to ask for the mask mandate to be removed. Since Connecticut is now one of the 15 states in the country that still requires it, that was a big pause for me. Before all these states started changing what they thought was best, I was perfectly in line with wearing masks. But now that we are definitely in the minority, and we know that kids' learning is impacted, we know that they're uncomfortable in school in the heat, that they're getting headaches, that anxiety is increasing, I think we really need to push the state to reevaluate and remove the mask mandate. One thing that struck me, which I don't hear talked about a ton, I looked it up on the Connecticut, connecticut.gov, there were 15 suicides in Connecticut in ages 10 to 19 in 2020. There were four deaths due to COVID in the same age group. I'm not acquainting suicides to masks at all. I have no idea what happened, but kids' lives have been turned upside down, and the masks are a constant reminder of how their lives have changed. And I hope that as a board, as a town, we can continue to advocate for making kids' lives more back to normal now that we are one of the most vaccinated states in the country, and the case rate is so low, it's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, Michelle Drennan, 1250 South Pine Creek Road in Fairfield. So this isn't really much about masks or whatever, but I just urge you to stand up for our children, to fight, right? We, in the schools, be a buddy, not a bully. We need buddies for these children. We need people to step up and not be afraid. Be not afraid, I was taught, right? Gather our hands together as a community and do what's right based off countless data, information, and just what I see in the eyes of my children every day, you gotta fight. You're trying, I hear it, all these things. You gotta try harder. We have to fight harder for these children. It's unfair. I can go shopping. I can do all the fun things. I can sit at a bar if I wanted to, okay? But my kids and our town's kids cannot sit in a classroom without a mask on. My son has a very hard time in school. He's having an even more difficult time in school because he can't understand his teacher, who's very strict for a first grader, what she's saying. She could be yelling, but maybe she's smiling. Emotions are being lost, and for a little boy who's incredibly emotional, he needs that. He needs to understand, she's not yelling, she's smiling. She's just strict. You are shaping my children and the children of this community in a way we no longer have control, and I have a very huge problem with that. So I'm not going to throw the data at you. I'm going to throw my very sad emotions, and I need you to fight. I need you to stand up for us, even in letters that can be a little bit, right? We're all over the world. People are doing it for the children. So I urge you, really dig deep, okay, and be a buddy, don't be a bully.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the callers. Is our first caller on the line?
Hi.
Hi. Just can I have your name and your address for the record?
Absolutely. Amy Jane Powers, and I live at 238 Northwood Road. Hi, good evening. I want to thank the Board of Education for their dedication to our children's education and recognize we've all navigated a difficult and unprecedented year with grace. I speak tonight on behalf of approximately 80 Stratfield School parents of fourth graders anticipated for the fall of 2021. I am here specifically to discuss the removal of the third section from our fourth grade, thus dividing 49 children into only two sections. Please note, three sections existed in the fourth grade last term. Currently, there is an enrollment total of 49. While we as parents understand schools are permitted to have up to 25, it does not necessarily mean that warrants the removal of our children's educational program during a pandemic. Stratfield School and only three other elementary schools in Fairfield are being treated disparately with regards to class size. We ask that you draw your attention to the November 13, 2020 projected enrollment report for school year 21 through 22. You will note that out of the 199 elementary school sections, there are only four with 24-plus students in one class. Thus, the anticipated Stratfield fourth-grade sections and the three other sections in other elementary schools are forced to adhere to the volume cap of 24-plus kids. The argument that the numbers are established and are to be adhered to is apparently not a rigid law warranting draconian applications, especially when, again, we are only one out of 199 and the additional three forced to accept this cap rationale. We are not being ignored, but we are being dismissed. The argument of inequity aside, we are currently under pandemic conditions.
Thank you. I'm sorry, two minutes is up. Thank you for your comment. If you have more, you can submit it via email. I'm sorry to cut you guys off, but we do have to just, we have to move through this. The next caller?
Kimberly Grant is not on the line currently.
Thank you. Next caller?
Hi, thank you. My name is Marnie White. I live at 29 Shoreham Village Drive, a parent of an elementary age student, and I'm calling to ask for the school board's help in advocating for a continued remote option for the medically vulnerable in our community. Just before the pandemic began, I began chemotherapy treatment, which made me extremely vulnerable to COVID-19, and given that our son was enrolled in the Remote Learning Academy. The RLA was a high-quality program, and our son flourished there. His teacher's efforts created a pleasant social environment for him and the other children in the class, and led to his highest achievement test scores to date. Despite this positive experience with the RLA, we were very hopeful that he would be able to return to in-person school next year. Unfortunately, I recently learned that I was not able to develop antibodies to vaccines that I had received earlier this year. Until children can be vaccinated, it will not be safe for children with medically vulnerable family members to return to in-person school. There are a number of medically vulnerable families in Fairfield, and many of these community members also have young children in public schools who cannot safely attend in-person. This would risk exposure. The burden on these families is enormous. Many are paying expensive medical bills. They are getting by on reduced income due to disability and pandemic-associated unemployment. They are too fatigued and ill to homeschool their children, and many cannot afford to pay for private remote school. I'm asking that Fairfield support our effort to provide a virtual learning option for medically compromised families for the coming school year. Fairfield's RLA should be a model program for the state. Fairfield has the data available to examine costs for people as well as academic outcomes, and I'm asking that Fairfield make these data public and help us advocate for an online educational platform for the upcoming year. While we would love to rejoin society as it opens up from a long and difficult year of isolation, our health vulnerabilities necessitate continued withdrawal from our beloved community. The loss of an education option for our children would compound this devastation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other callers on the line? We're just checking with our...
I'm just waiting for someone to unmute their phone.
Okay.
We have a few other people on the line.
Okay.
Melissa Longo, and unmute your phone if you want to speak.
Hi, my name is Melissa Longo. I live at 3791 Congress Street.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Melissa Longo. I live at 3791 Congress Street. I have two young daughters, and I'm just asking that we lift this mandate. My daughter has missed out, both of my kids, in fact, have missed out on enough in school, having a normal experience. I actually withdrew my oldest from Fairfield Public School system. I've lived here almost my entire life. I went through the entire Fairfield Public School system, and I have to say, the way that this pandemic was handled, I'm extremely disappointed in our representation. These kids have been asked to shoulder a burden that should never be asked of any child. While they walk around a place where they should feel the most safe, the most secure, and the most loved, is a place that they now fear. They are scared to take their masks off. They are scared to look at anybody in the face. Their social, emotional development has suffered tremendously. These children cannot read emotional cues, social cues. They are learning to see that everyone with a mask on, they're afraid. My daughter is terrified of wearing a mask, and I will be completely honest with you, I have never put one on either one of my children, and I never will. The fact that we don't have anyone standing up to say enough is enough. These kids have gone through enough this past year, falling behind in school, emotional repercussions of this is astounding, and I think that everyone knows the data, especially in Connecticut. Everyone who has chosen to get the vaccine has done so for the most part. I think that we need to move forward and bring these kids what they desperately need so much, which is their childhood that they are going to look back on. I don't care what grade it's in, lift the mask mandate or make it optional for parents to send their kids to school. I definitely think RLA should be a choice for parents who cannot bring their child to school for medical purposes. However, please don't tie the two in together, basically saying if you choose not to mask your child, then you must participate in RLA. I believe that that is extremely unfair, and it seems like that's the caveat here.
Time, that's the time is up. Thank you. Next caller?
Jennifer Sheriff from the London Beach.
Hi, this is Jennifer Sheriff. I live at One River Lane in Southport, and I'm just following up on everyone really requesting that the board stand up and be very assertive with the state that this mask mandate needs to end.
Thank you. Are there any other callers on the line?
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were done. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Oh, I'm sorry. But I am done. I just wanted to make sure that I was heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the line?
Erica Garvey.
Hello, board. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great, thank you. My name is Erica Garvey of 90 Robertson Crossing, and this is the first time I've been to a Board of Ed meeting and certainly hope to work with many of you in the future. My son will be attending Fairfield Public School for the first time in the coming fall in first grade, and I am here today on behalf of many students, teachers, and parents to ask for your support. What exactly am I asking from you? Well, it's quite simple. We need this Board of Education to write a letter on behalf of this community, parents, teachers, and most importantly, the students, to all the necessary groups, Connecticut State Department of Education, Ned Lamont himself, et cetera, urging them to drop the mandate and go to an optional approach instead. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, the time to act is now. RLA and masks should not be tied together. I think the solution of a state-funded online program is a great one, but let our kids return to school. There is simply not enough evidence on transmission amongst the younger population to even warrant a mask mandate. However, there is enough evidence to now prove that masks can have negative longer effects on emotional damage. Now, on the flip side of this, if you aren't willing to fight on our behalf, and for some reason you are in favor of the mask mandate, I would hope you plan on funding the budget line item to provide each and every student a brand-new medical mask at their disposal every single day of this school year as they request. I won't bore you with the mask, but as you can guess, this is quite the six-figure line item. The study recently released showing the dangerous pathogens found on children's masks are more of a concern than the .002 percent COVID transmission amongst kids. This simply cannot drag out until the week before school. We need your action now. Do we have your support? Will you work with us?
Thank you. Are there any more callers?
Yes, we have Amy Bassbrother.
Can, do you know how many, Marco, how many callers are on the line? Can, do you know how many, Marco, how many callers are on the line?
We have three more after this.
Okay, these are gonna be...
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you. Amy Sperazza, 322 Brambley Hatch Circle. Since March of 2020, we've lived in fear. Fear has dominated every single news cycle, conversation, and decision-making process in the past 15 months. It's time for us all to be brave and move forward. Our children's lives have changed dramatically for the worse through this pandemic, which statistically does not affect them. Policymakers and the CDC assured us all along that kids tolerate masks perfectly well, and they have no impact on their well-being. The amount of evidence contrary to these assurances is exploding. On a physical level, strep meningitis, and E. coli have all been found on kids' masks amongst many other harmful bacteria and pathogens. Emotionally, kids feel socially isolated and disconnected from their peers. Suicide attempts by girls have surged by more than 50% throughout this pandemic. Colorado has actually declared a state of emergency for children's mental health. You might weigh that risk if we were dealing with Ebola. However, we are not. We are dealing with a virus that, as so many have pointed out, 99.99% of children will survive. We've known for years that babies and young children rely on human facial expressions and need social stimulation to develop properly. Having a teacher stand six feet away at all times with their face covered in a mask or a double mask and a face shield is not conducive to proper development. Prohibiting children from sharing, hugging, laughing, and breathing freely is not conducive to proper development. On the whole, children have not been hospitalized from COVID, and they don't transmit it. In Connecticut, an overwhelming majority of adults are vaccinated, which further protects kids. To the parents with immunocompromised children for whom COVID is more of a threat, I sympathize with you. I support you, and I support the option of the Remote Learning Academy. We all just want our kids and families to be safe and around the same team. However, we have to ask ourselves, how much are these unregulated, non-standardized pieces of cloth protecting our kids in the tiny percentage of the at-risk population that is not vaccinated? Are masks truly helping, or do they give us a feeling of control in a time when we feel powerless? My family stayed home for months. We took COVID more seriously than most of our friends. We didn't gather for holidays, or even to mourn my 92-year-old grandmother who died from COVID in March of last year. We didn't allow our children to play with other kids indoors for an entire year without vaccinated, something no...
I'm sorry, your time is up. Next caller?
We have Jenny McNamara.
Hi, calling from 124 Edward Street. Thank you for your time this evening. I would like to address the reopening plan for school. It is my hope that Connecticut will follow what most of the country is already doing, and that is to be going mask-free, both indoors and outdoors in our schools. Both the Diocese of Bridgeport, Hartford, Sims Ferry Endline School Districts have already announced their plans of opening mask optional, and word on the street is many are to follow. Given the low numbers that Connecticut has experienced, and it begs the question, at what point are we willing to ditch the masks for these children who have been scientifically proven to not be super spreaders? My child attended a local Catholic school last year that was open all year without incident. All of those children will be going back to school next year mask-free as well, unless there is an uptick in cases. This brings me to the next point of variants, what has already been brought up and written about in the news, so let's get ahead of it. Dr. Scott Getlue, who works on the Governor's Reopening Task Force, was already warning that the Delta variant is coming to schools this fall and will target children. The Delta variant is mostly in England right now, and yes, about 50% of cases are this new variant, but it is no more serious than the original. He was implying that because children aren't vaccinated, it could be a problem, and to not be too quick to get rid of masks. Variants will continue to arise, and it shouldn't be met with panic, but common sense. It should also be noted that Dr. Getlue sits on the Board of Pfizer. There has been talk that the Governor is holding the mask mandate over our heads until the children get vaccinated. The World Health Organization has just made an announcement over the last few days that vaccination for anyone under 18 should be halted until further research has been conducted, as there have been above-average occurrences of serious side effects. I pray there isn't even a consideration of making two classes of students, those vaccinated and mask-free, and those unvaccinated, having to wear masks. The bullying that would ensue is a given, not to mention the psychological trauma of being signaled out based on a private medical decision. There are simply some children who are biased not to get the vaccine.
Thank you. I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you. Next caller?
We have Marie Rotunda.
Thank you.
Hi, Marie Rotunda, 116 Bungalow Avenue. Our children need to return to school in August without a mask mandate or vaccine contingency. Parents should be empowered to make that choice. It's absurd to realize we aren't. The infection rate in Fairfield is below 1%, and the school staff of any age or risk status have had the ability to vaccinate themselves for months. It's now widely known that children have a natural immunity to serious symptoms from COVID and very low transmission. According to our pediatricians, no child in his large multi-pound practice has been hospitalized overnight due to COVID since the beginning of the pandemic. Along with the children's natural immunity, there have been vast improvements in COVID therapeutics and treatments. So children now have a higher risk of sickening themselves by unnecessarily wearing masks than the virus itself, not to mention the social, emotional, and educational toll that masks have already taken on our kids. The vaccine itself is not FDA-approved, but rather authorized for emergency use. The vaccine is in its infancy, and there isn't an emergency situation for the vast majority of our healthy young children. We parents, along with our doctors' advice, have the right to decide if our children ought to wear masks and/or get vaccinated. Our neighbors in Catholic schools, the Bridgeport Diocese, have announced that they will not wait for state guidance. The superintendent announced that parents have the option to mask or vaccinate their children. The majority of states in our nation have made similar decisions. Parents should make the choice. Healthy children should not be forced by politicians, unions, superintendents, or anyone other than their own parents with their pediatrician's advice to wear a mask or vaccinate. The scientific evidence and common sense for this stance are both obvious. Enough is enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, we don't, we don't take applause during public comment. And just the callers that are on the line, we need, we have a full agenda that we need to get on with business, so I'm asking if you have something different to comment on besides the mask mandate. I will give you two minutes. If you are calling to speak about the mask mandate, I just ask that you be, keep it to the two minutes. Actually, we're gonna move, we're gonna move public comment to one minute now for the remaining callers.
Hello? Yes?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Valerie. I live at 101 Winter Park Drive in Fairfield, and I will try to keep it to one minute. Just cut me off one minute.
Okay.
I was really happy to see that you guys wrote a letter. I read it. I'm glad you're writing it. I'm in favor of the RLA. I do ask that you put more bite in that letter, and not ask him for things, but tell him how you want it to be. You know, that, I really want some more bite in that letter to say, this is how it's gonna be for Fairfield. This is what we want for Fairfield, and not be asking him, because I don't think he's really gonna respond well to something like that when you're just asking him. I have three kids in the school system, two in high school, and one in the elementary school who has acute bronchitis. He has an inhaler. He's worn the mask all year and felt like he was being suffocated. I came home from school one day for my work and found him on the couch passed out, and I think he had a CO2 sericose event. He's been nauseous. He's had headaches all year, trying to do the right thing for all kids around him. And social and emotional development has taken a hit, too. In my belief, and I'm sure doctors will agree with me, teachers understand this, I'm sure you do as parents, kids need to be around each other to have a strength in immune system.
Thank, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your comment and for calling in. If you, again, if anybody that, I'm sorry that I had to cut you off just to, you know, keep our meeting moving so we can get to business. Public comment email is open, and as well as the form with, on the agenda, that if you want to comment, you can use that form as well. We have two more callers left. One more. We'll take our last caller, and then we'll move on with the agenda.
Gillian Canno.
Go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Gillian Canno, I'd like to follow up with Amy Jane's request for additional teacher at Stratfield School. I would also like to stress that our hearts and concerns are with our teachers, administration, and support staff at Stratfield School. In addition to providing vital and measurable roles in our children's education, they, in addition to adhering to the COVID-19 safety mechanisms, are and will be experiencing not-yet-realized consequences and potential learning gaps our children likely experienced this past year. Thus, this certainly is the time to support and accommodate the teachers with what these eight- and nine-year-olds need by hiring teachers. While I stress that this is a vital request for Stratfield School, as well as the three other schools in the district, we also understand there is a significant cost in obtaining additional teachers for the fall. However, I understand that our community is eligible for and will take an elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund by the American Rescue Plan. Certainly, the spirit behind these funds will be to support our valuable teachers and the children by expanding educational relief. Thus, we are not requesting a precedent to be set for future change to class cap sizes. We are simply seeking a modification for the upcoming fall during these exceptionally difficult times.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, your time is up. Again, you can submit the rest of your comment via the email or the form on the agenda. I thank everyone for joining us and for giving comment today. I'm sorry that, you know, time is so much short, and we have a full agenda, so we need to move forward. But again, we welcome your comment via email. Moving on, recognition of excellence, student athletes, and FCAC champions, and national merit scholars. Mr. Cummings?
All right, good evening, everyone. Mike Cummings, Superintendent of Schools. It is my honor and pleasure tonight to list the students that are mentioned tonight. We have several categories to present, beginning with our national merit scholars, and then we'll move to the athletic honors for both teams and individuals for both high schools. So, starting with the national merit scholars from, excuse me, from Fairfield Ludlow High School, there were two, Olivia Beniston and Ruchel Malirapu were the two students from Fairfield Ludlow, and Fairfield Ward had two students as well, Peter Belkin and Christopher Newell. So, congratulations to those four students for achieving national merit scholarship status. And now to athletics. We have quite a number, as usual, lists of teams and students to recognize this evening. We haven't been able to do this in a while, so this is wonderful that the fall sports, excuse me, spring sports returned almost in force this year, but what continued was our individual and team accomplishments from the Fairfield Public Schools. So, first, a list from Fairfield Ludlow High School, team championships. The boys' soccer team was the FCAC regional champions. The bowling was the league champions, and again, our bowling team is a co-op team, so that represents both Fairfield Ludlow and Fairfield Ward students. Gymnastics was the FCAC champions, and softball was the FCAC championships. They had a record of 16-1, the girls' softball team at Ludlow, and they were one win away from becoming state champions. So, it was a record-setting year at Fairfield Ludlow for the, for the girls' softball team. You should give them applause. I shouldn't have to remind you of that.
Well, we just, we weren't sure if you were gonna go through the rest of the list, you know, just, can we can just...
Interrupt me. I know it's gonna long, but you can interrupt. Applause is good. Now, individual student accomplishments. Ludlow, first-team All-State, Boys Cross Country, Nathan Kramer. Girls Cross Country, Anna Keely. Field Hockey, Hockey, Sophia Faust. Boys Soccer, Kalem Crawford. Cheerleading, Lindsay Taylor and Mia Senator. Gymnastics, Abigail Cerny, Ava Mancini, Tara, I apologize, Tara, for screwing up your name, Chomien, and Ava Golding and Emma Senator. Boys Ice Hockey, Sam Swanson. Boys Swimming, the 50 freestyle, Tyler Signano, first place and state champion. Tyler Signano, state champion, first place. Hundred Butterfly, Tyler Signano, first place and state champion. Hundred Brestoke, Emmett Adams, first place and state champion. Softball, Ally Clark. Girls Lacrosse, Callie Cirilli, Kaylee Summers. Girls Tennis, Gabby Price, Julia Peta. Girls Track and Field, Anna Keely, champion in the 1600. Tia Stapleton, the high jump champion. Caitlin Filoramo, the discus champion. And Girls Skiing, Matilda Nichols and Erin McHugh. Just a couple more from Fairfield Ludlow. Academic All-State Softball, Ally Clark. Academic All-American, Boys Lacrosse, Will Geary. And All-American, Kaylee Cirilli. Fairfield Ward High School, again, the bowling team, the co-op team was champions, again, so with its Ward and Ludlow. The baseball team were the FCAC champions. Quite a year for them as well. Yeah, go ahead. Ward, first-team All-State from Ward. Baseball, John Heitzman. Boys Skiing, Kieran Shea. Boys Tennis, Petro Kuzmic. He's also the state singles champion. Yeah, go ahead. Jake, Jake Manley and Christopher Rippey, Ripke, Chris, excuse me, Christian Ripke. Boys Soccer, Sean Rodriguez. Cross Country, Amelia Kozaraki. Girls Track and Field, Amelia Kozaraki. Boys Ice Hockey, Sam Swanson. Boys Lacrosse, All-State, Jack McKenna. Boys Swimming, the 50 freestyle, again, because it's a co-op team. Well, he was state champion, so I'm gonna say his name again. Tyler Signano, first place state champion. And Hundred Butterfly, Tyler Signano, first place state champion. And Gymnastics, Emma Johnson, Carolyn Garrett, Bailey Klein, and Kira Dawson. All-American Boys Lacrosse, Jack McKenna. And Academic All-American Boys Lacrosse, Drew Buck. I'll just end by saying, we look forward to future meetings when the students can join us in person.
Absolutely, and on behalf of the Board, congratulations to all of our student athletes. It was a really, a great spring, and I wish that you all could have been here with us today to recognize you all in person, and we look forward to, you know, more great accomplishments next fall and next spring. Moving on, developmental relationship survey results. Fairfield Cares. I thank you guys for waiting. We have Kristin McCarthy-Wehhe and our former friend, Mr. Dwyer, former chair and Board of Education member, and Ms. Hazlett from Fairfield Cares, and Dana Basio. You have to press the button. Hold it. Hold it while you're speaking.
That's why I'm here to hold the button.
We brought you, we brought a pro in here.
And I'm clearly out of practice. It's so wonderful to see all of you. I want to begin by thanking the Board of Education for your ongoing partnership with Fairfield Cares Community Coalition over many years. Over 10 years ago, I sat in the audience here and listened to Riasap Director Bob Francis present survey results that were headed in the wrong direction for the young people of our community. That night, a number of us vowed to get involved. Fairfield Cares, now co-chaired by our Superintendent, Mr. Cummings, thank you very much for that support. For the past decade, has been our designated prevention council, working with multiple stakeholders, community members, parents, police, public health, prevention professionals, like Board Member Jennifer Jacobson, faith leaders, and more. Our mission is focus on preventing substance misuse, fostering social and emotional wellness and resilience among youth, young adults, and families. The coalition builds capacity, mobilizes the Fairfield community, and develops comprehensive strategies, strategies to help families make healthy choices that allow youth and young adults to thrive. I invite you to follow the wonderful communication shared by Ronnie Noor, who's here with us as well, our programming chair. You have almost the entire leadership team here with you tonight, and our youth committee on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter for some really great information, and we encourage parents to enjoy, and join us in this work. It truly is a community effort. The data that we've gathered over the years helps us to make informed decisions about how to best serve our young people and families, and it's a pleasure to be here tonight with Mr. Dwyer, who's been a longtime member, and Ms. Basio, who's been a tremendous partner from Fairfield Public Schools, as well as Ms. Hazlett, who will take you through the results of our Search Institute Developmental Relationships 2021 Survey.
All right, we'll just, yeah, we'll wait for the, so I'm going to, so provide an overview of the survey. We can just go to the next slide, Meg, that would be great. All right, so we do these surveys, as you may recall, just about every two years, and I was really excited that we were able to survey more students than we have in the past, which, which is great, and we, we rely on this school. We appreciate the school's... and instrumental in our prevention work when we address substance misuse. And then this year, focusing on relationships. And we thought this would be an appropriate year to, to look at developmental relationships, given that COVID was something that we were all having to deal with. The survey was optional. Parents were received a letter prior to the administration of the survey, a week or two before it was administered. And it was hopefully distributed to students in February, but due to circumstances, it needed to be delayed until the end of March. But we had a robust response. So we can go to the next slide, please. All right. We'll go over some of the demographics very quickly. So our goal was to survey roughly 2,400 students. But I think because of probably survey fatigue, perhaps, COVID, I mean, lots of things going on, you know, it wasn't surprising that we didn't meet our goal, but we did survey more students than ever before. So that was, that was very exciting. And what's also very exciting, and I'm just going to provide sort of an overview of the 7th through 12th grade results, but so you know that the Search Institute provides us with a tool that we can look at specific student populations and provide data on that student population. That's something that's brand new and it's easy to navigate, so it's a wonderful value-added tool when we work with the Search Institute. So next slide. Next slide. So the survey this year encompassed several modules. The developmental relationships module were three, three modules. In essence, drug-free communities was that substance prevention data, the four core measures, the 30-day past use, perception of harm, student perception of parent disapproval of youth use, and student perception of peer disapproval. We also looked at school climate. And then, search also included a COVID module as well as a racial justice. And those two were only given to the high school students. Next slide. So it's important to, to recognize, this is the first time we've done this survey, so the results aren't not, not being compared to any other results. We're just looking at our own data, and it needs to be looked at in context of, of that. As we do this, as we go over the results, and there may be some discussion about whether we want to continue using this survey or use a different survey tool two years from now, but it's just important to look at this within the context of just this particular survey. It's just a point in time. Okay. Next slide. So I'm going to have Dana get into the developmental relationships modules.
Thanks, Kathy. I'm Dana Basio. I have to say, when Kathy put together the presentation, she had my name first, and I said, "You really shouldn't do that. I'm kind of riding on your coattails here." And I was really grateful to, to be involved and to learn more about this survey. It's not something that I had experience with in the past when we had done the, the asset survey. And I really was, it was pretty remarkable. And one of the things that I absolutely loved about the modules is that we were able to add so many things that were so timely. And it's pretty remarkable to look at all of the things that we've had to grapple with in the last year, aside from the pandemic in and of itself, and, and the fact that we were able to provide and get some, some insight and input from our, from our young people in terms of their response to a lot of the, the new developments and awareness with regard to equity, as well as the pandemic. So the, sort of the core component of the developmental relationships module is looking at the developmental relationships framework. And within that is also a secondary survey that looks at social and emotional competencies that are aligned with the CASL framework, which the CASL framework is something that I, I feel very strongly about. There's a great deal of research and support in terms of these five core areas that we should be addressing with our young folks, from kindergarten up through the day they walk out the door, and then looking at equitable practices as well. So in looking at the developmental relationships framework, there are really five core elements. We're going to see on the next slide, the student responses, how they factor into each separate subscale, but the five core are express care. Again, in terms of relationships with the adults in their lives, and particularly with regard to their, their teachers and the folks in schools, is how are, how are you showing me that you care? Are you listening? Are you actively listening? Are you warm? Are you encouraging me? The next is looking at challenging growth. And I think that really speaks to, from an achievement perspective, the expectations that we hold in terms of our vision of a graduate, and we look at what we expect in Fairfield. We have a rigorous curriculum. The next is provide support. Not only do we have to, again, empower our students to learn, but also how do we scaffold that support? How do we step back when it's time? And we recognize that they are becoming more independent and helping them to advocate for themselves. Sharing power is giving students voice, allowing them to have choice and autonomy and decision-making in their learning. And then expanding possibilities is how are we helping kids understand what options are there out there? How do we define success? Is it a narrow definition of success? Or is it something that we provide opportunities for kids to recognize that there are many different ways that they can, they can show the world, that they're present and, and capable and, and successful? So that's sort of an overview of the framework. And if you look at sort of those five core areas, and again, I want to go back to Kathy's initial statement, when you look at that red line, that red line is an established, sort of estimated baseline. It's not really our baseline. This is our first data point. So anyone who knows anything about statistics knows we need five data points before we can get some really meaningful assessment of what it, what it means. If you don't mind, Meg, go back really quickly. So if you look at those core areas that we, we assessed, in terms of the overall, we're seeing moderate developmental relationships overall, when we comprise the other five scores. One of the areas where we see clearly our students recognizing our staff, our school district certainly are challenging academic growth. We are setting high expectations for them. They are very aware of that. There are a couple of areas, though, that, that would, where we can see room for improvement. And Meg, this might be a, a good time to switch on to the next slide. So again, express care and expand possibilities. We're not doing a deep, deep dive today, but those were really the two core areas where we see students recognizing the most need in terms of relationship building, teachers being warm and inviting, and then in terms of expanding possibilities, how do we define success for our students? Do we find alternate routes for success? I will say, in terms of express care, I thought on this quite a bit. I think it would be pretty cursory and, and shortsighted to say our teachers are not caring. I think we have to recognize the impact of this year in terms of access and ability and opportunity to connect meaningfully with one another. My boss is sitting behind me, and he'll walk in the door, and I don't even greet him. I just ask him a question. So, you know, I think, I think everyone, the parents, the kids, the staff, have been presented with insurmountable amounts of, of sort of tasks to accomplish with less time than usual and less opportunity to engage in a meaningful way. So I'm cautious about assigning blame or lack of care effort in terms of that, that area of need. Although I will say, if we think about it through a trauma-informed lens, tenet number one, connect then redirect. And I think we haven't always had the opportunity to do that this year. We're going to move on, Meg. This is actually just a, so for, for our students, just as a summary, for 15 of the 20 measures that, that contribute to the five core areas, more than half of our students feel extremely or moderately supported by teachers. That's really important. I think for the majority of those measures, we're seeing that kids do feel connected and feel like they have relationships with their teachers. However, on six of the 20 measures, we see some areas where lesser amounts of students are feeling connected with their teachers and don't feel that high level of support that we would hope, or they don't have that awareness or opportunity to connect. So again, while challenge growth element is a strength, I would also ask us to think on the fact that expanding possibilities and express care are core components of building relationships in kids. At the end of the day, our, our relationships with one another are the foundation for experience and taking risks and vulnerability and growth. And in the absence of that, you know, we, we limit opportunities for our kids, so. One of the next areas was looking at social emotional competencies. So these are the five core components of the CASL framework. Our kids feel pretty good from a social emotional perspective. They feel like they have really, really good skills in general. They feel pretty self-aware. They feel like they're able to regulate their, their behaviors and make decisions responsibly. I think the one area where, you know, it gives me a little bit of pause is, again, those relationship skills. And again, I think back to our vision of a graduate, it's not just about achievement. It's about being collaborative. It's about being innovative. It's about being able to, to, again, work together to create something even more beautiful. So while I don't think it's a significant area of weakness, I think it's something to, to muse on. At the end of the day, youth who felt stronger levels of social emotional connectedness have higher achievement. I mean, that's in the research, that, that would certainly be supported. The next area that we looked at was equitable practices. So this really ties into a lot of the equity work that's happened this year. And a good majority of our students, 65%, well, two-thirds of our students, feel that Fairfield has a moderately culturally responsive environment. Although when we get to the results of the COVID-19 specific module, I think there was some, the results were really encouraging and inspirational, so I'm excited to, to move on to that section. At the end of the day, I think our students that responded feel that, for the most part, there are adults that they have, they can see that reflect them. Although I will encourage you to think back to the demographics, which I did quickly look at our demographics at the district level and the respondents. It was pretty consistent. Clearly, a, a majority of our students are white, from a white background. So, and, and thinking about our, our teacher, our teacher, what's the word I'm looking for? Composition of teachers and staff, pretty consistent. I know that that's something that's being worked on at, at present in terms of looking at hiring for diversity, so.
Go ahead, Meg, to the next slide. So, so this is an overview of the past 30-day use, just looking at the, the results for this year. Alcohol remains and has been our biggest concern in terms of youth substance use. You can see the trajectory of vaping and marijuana almost align with one another in the upper high school grades. Blessedly, tobacco remains low. And let's go to the next slide, because we'll get into this a little deeper. So the, the data this year, I have to admit, was kind of interesting. So I pretty much start every slide regarding the, the data with, you know, is this an impact of COVID, or have we really seen some significant improvement? It, two years from now, when we redo the, the survey, we'll know a little bit better. But the, the results of, of past 30-day use have definitely improved based on the survey results significantly, from, you know, 15% to 21% regarding alcohol use. Went up a little bit for middle school, but dropped significantly in high school. This may be frankly a result of not having, no, you know, not getting together with peers. You know, COVID definitely prohibited people from, from getting together. We still see the senior class as being a significant population that we want to, to work with. And, and it's not surprising, it remains the trend that, you know, the, the trend continues to go up in those upper high school grades. And by senior year, we definitely see a lot of relaxed attitudes around substance use, substance use. Next slide, please. So perception of risk of drinking, five or more drinks once or twice a week. This is considered binge drinking. The perception of risk actually went down, even though drinking went, also went down, the perception of risk went down. So we, so that's not a good thing. We want the perception of risk to go up. So that's sort of an, an interesting just observation. And again, not sure if it's because students were seeing their parents drinking more at home. We do know that sales for alcohol was, went up significantly during COVID, so that all may have had an impact on their perception of risk. Next slide. Use of marijuana in the past 30 days also went, went down. We see the, pretty much, as I said, no change in middle school, but went down significantly in, in high school. Again, you know, is this an impact of COVID, not being able to get together, staying at home? You know, something that I think we need to look at. Next slide. Perception of risk, oh, sorry, if you can go back, my perception of risk, using marijuana once or twice a week. Again, we're seeing that the perception of, of risk went down in, in middle school, but went up a little bit in high school. So I'm wondering what's happening there in middle school. We see a range, and I wanted to show you, you know, what that range of risk is. So it goes down dramatically by 12th grade. And, and of the four substances, alcohol, marijuana, tobacco and misuse of prescription drug, sadly marijuana has the lowest perception of risk among those four substances. So we will continue to work on this, no matter, no matter what. Okay. Vaping nicotine or marijuana in the past 30 days. So two years ago, the Search Institute didn't inquire about vaping. We did ask about it in our supplemental survey. This year, they asked about vaping, but did not make a distinction between vaping nicotine and marijuana. It's, it's important to understand that, that vaping is a device. It's a mechanism of using substances. So my hope is that in two years, if we continue to use search, that they make a distinction between vaping nicotine or vaping marijuana. 6% of our 7th through 12th grade students compared, vaped in the past 30 days compared to 9% who vaped nicotine and 10% who vaped marijuana two years ago. 3% of our medical, middle school students compared to 2.2% vape nicotine and 1.5%. So that went up a little bit. High school went down significantly, 7% compared to 16% vaping nicotine or 16% vaping marijuana in the 2019 survey. Next slide. Perception of risk of vaping. So 81% of our 7th through 12th grade students considered vaping as risky behavior. In 2019, 69% viewed vaping nicotine as moderate or, or great risk. So it's good to see that that number is, is going up. But again, we want it to be higher. But it's, it's, I think the message is getting across, and I know that the health curriculum has been doing a lot of work around vaping this past year in particular. Next slide. So it's also important to consider ever-used. So those who, when we look at past 30 days, we consider that students who are current users of a particular substance. But we also know that a lot of, lot of young people just like to try, like to experiment, just, you know. So we expect these numbers to be significantly higher. So it's, it's not surprising to see that close to a quarter of the students have tried alcohol. 8% overall have tried marijuana. A small percentage have tried, have misused prescription drug, but I'm curious about that 4%, 4% in middle school. So I think that's something that we want to take a look at in a little bit more detail. And then, close to 8% have vaped, tried vaping. All right. Just hit it again, Meg. I think this comes up one at a time. Yeah. So looking at the two other core measures, almost all our students report their parents disapproving of drinking or vaping. Slightly fewer report their parents disapproving of marijuana use. And that drops to 86% by, by senior year. While it's all high numbers, we, obviously, we want to keep those numbers up above 90% for sure. Overall, most students report that their peers disapprove of substance use. 78% disapprove of alcohol, 76% disapprove of vaping, but only 71% of marijuana. Not surprising- Overall, most students report that their peers disapprove of substance use. 78% disapprove of alcohol, 76% disapprove of vaping, but only 71% of marijuana. Not surprising that these numbers are lower than what they perceive their parents think. And again, by senior year, there's a significant decrease in the perception of peer disapproval of substance use. 66%. Whoop, Meg, real quick, go back, go back, go back. 66% for alcohol, 63% for vaping, and only 47% for marijuana. And I will turn it back over to Dana to go into the school climate module.
Sure. So in terms of the school climate module, again, when we look at sort of the core components in the literature of a healthy and positive school climate, they really extrapolated these eight core areas. And really, we saw a lot of nice things in terms of, apparently, our teachers are very captivating, which is exciting. I'm not exactly sure what that looks like, but this year, if they could keep their interest, I will take it. Kids generally feel pretty safe and feel that school is a fair place and feel like they belong. I think one of the areas that I want to highlight yet don't really, haven't found great answers, I've looked through Search Institute in terms of instructional practices, that is an area certainly in need of some improvement or further investigation. I tried really hard to figure out what that meant exactly and really didn't get as far as I might have liked to, so stay tuned. The other one that is pretty notable and I think is consistent with the developmental relationship survey is, again, the feeling that students have voice and agency and have some choice in their experiences. And I think when we look at the school climate survey results that Andrea is going to review in a little while, there are lots of continuities and common threads between this survey and that survey. And then in terms of looking at current events in the COVID-19 module, I'm not going to spend a great deal of time going through each of these. One thing that was a real positive in terms of both coping sort of readily, you know, with the pandemic as it is, kids have pretty reliable reality testing. They're pretty logical and pragmatic that this is happening and it's not something I could explain away. In some ways, we can say they have radically accepted our current circumstances. That said, you know, kids certainly have felt stress in the last 15 months, as most of us have. And luckily, feel like they do have a capacity to learn from these experiences and take some positives away. And I think even looking at the qualitative responses to the screener that we did, students certainly took away a lot of sort of life lessons from this experience. One of the things that I think is an area to look at is, you know, again, what are kids using to cope effectively with stressors? Not just related to the pandemic, but just to cope effectively with stressors in general. And do they know who they can seek out? And do they actively do so when they're under duress? So that's sort of my summary of that slide. And then in terms of connection, kids are feeling pretty connected to their peers and their friends. I think the advent of social media, we'll call it one of the silver linings of social media, kids are able to stay pretty connected to peers. However, I think being connected to other kids within the school setting, that's been more of a challenge this year with regard to the different models and being hybrid and masks and things to that nature. And then, you know, one of the areas that we look at relationship-wise, and this again was consistent with the screener that we conducted in January, that kids feel really connected to their families and their siblings. You know, granted, some of us as parents were very ready for all the kids to go back to school, but there were opportunities that perhaps they would not have had if we were not all locked up together or locked down together. And a lot of kids are, you know, feeling that their friendships have been maintained while they're, about a quarter are feeling that friendships are not as strong as they perhaps once were. One of the areas where we saw, and I don't want to say a decline because we don't have a baseline measure, but relationships with teachers are certainly perceived to be weaker this year based on the current survey results. In terms of social emotional supports, teachers have made kids feel extremely safe, however, have not perhaps had as much opportunity to speak to or help kids make sense of the experience, you know. And you can't really speak to the why. I think, again, we see kids in our district, we have a very high achievement orientation. I think that's something that kids responded to the screener in saying pretty astutely that the academic train didn't stop, so to speak. So at any rate, that likely plays a role in that as well. And then this, to me, was one of the most exciting sort of bits of information in terms of the racial injustice module. Kids really feel like they have a voice and that they have the capacity to make change and to be involved in something bigger than them. And frankly, I wonder what this would have looked like had we done it two years ago. We've had some really active groups in district, particularly our student-led groups, who have been, I think, incredibly inspirational to our staff groups. So there was a lot of really nice information here and, I think, incredibly inspirational and positive, so.
So as we look to next steps, it's important that we communicate the data out to all staff. We also want to share it with students. One possibility is to form a small working group committee that might take a look at making some recommendations for next steps as we review the data. We'll also take this out into the community and share this information with our community partners. We do have some funding. Fairfield Cares does have some funding to provide follow-up training, so to address some of the areas that we might want to work on. But it's exciting. It's really exciting. I'm very hopeful and I just thought this was a good fit for the time period. And I think at this point, I think that's probably the last slide, I believe. Yes, open it up for questions. So thank you all.
Thank you for that presentation. We'll take it to the board for any questions. Mrs. Max Canelli?
Just one quick question. And we don't need to boil down at this level to this, but is it possible for some of the questions that the administration or staff with whom you're presenting it can get it disaggregated at greater levels? Okay, so I'm thinking specifically, for example, that last question regarding racial justice issues. And to have disaggregate that by ethnicity even into two significant chunks, I think would really, okay, I was, provide, I'm trying to say provide color for, provide, you know, the greater detail and the richer story behind it. So that is possible. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Jacobson?
Hi, thank you all for being here tonight and sharing this. I had a question about, similar to Mrs. Max and Canelli, was about the, I know we only got the aggregate report here, but did you see anything vitally significant when, between the levels, between the grades, in terms of the middle school or the high school levels, if you've gotten to that point yet, in terms of their connection or just some of these more concerning areas that you brought forward this evening?
We played a little bit and really, you know, I think where we were, I'm sorry, we played a little bit. And I think where we were expecting, like, we're like, oh, there's definitely going to be something here. Nothing immediately jumped out at that moment, but we, you know, certainly, there's more opportunity to make comparisons between groups and look for any areas of significant difference and things to that nature to help us kind of target students and/or buildings or levels. So there's room for that.
And if, may I add, Madam Chair, just to that, and this is something you've heard for many years at the Fairfield Cares table, is clearly with some of the middle school data, we need to be starting some of these conversations earlier. And we saw some of those numbers reflected in the data even here today. So I think that's one of the really key messages to take home and that we will be discussing, there's a new data committee that's part of the coalition as well, who will be looking at that also.
Thank you. Ms. Asa?
Thank you for this presentation. It was very informative. I do have a question regarding marijuana. And you made a comment throughout the presentation several times about the perceived risks and how you were worried in some areas about how those went down versus up. And I'm just curious if you have any comments on the latest legislation legalizing marijuana in this state and how that's going to play in because it seems a little counterintuitive to, you know, what we're doing here, especially with the parental units disapproving of it and now legally being able to use it. So I'm just curious what your thoughts are on that.
It provides job security. How's that? Yeah. It speaks to the fact that we need to do a lot of education on marijuana. I think we already saw before it became legalized in Connecticut that youth were receiving confusing messages about marijuana. It's legal for medicinal use. Does that mean it's okay to use, you know? Other states are legalizing it. Well, what does that mean? You know, so we need to do a lot of education because today's marijuana is not the same as the marijuana, cannabis a generation ago, a couple generations ago. The THC levels are significantly higher. And I'm very concerned about the edibles. I have lots of concerns about the marijuana legislation. But it's incumbent upon us as a coalition and all our community partners and parents to help educate our kids, to keep them safe so that they recognize this is not a substance. This is not a substance they want to try. There are lots and lots of risks involved. And unfortunately, you know, we all know that the brain is not fully developed until the mid-20s, right? So why do anything to your body that's going to screw things up? I mean, that's bottom line is how I kind of feel about it. So we want to keep our kids as healthy as possible. And so it's all about education, 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 understanding what it's all about.
And just as a brief follow-up, this is a trend that we've seen over time and it's something that we know that we're going to have to continue to message to young people. That hasn't changed with the legislation and where our focus is on youth prevention and continuing, as Ms. Hazlitt said, to get that message out to the community and to parents and to help them understand that, the importance of the messages that Kathy just shared.
Ms. Max Canelli?
Thank you. One more, and again, just to the issue of marijuana, I suppose ultimately it comes down to now you're just treating it similarly to alcohol and nicotine, which is just being legal is one thing, but its impact on you, of course, is something entirely different. Although, again, it's hard seeing those senior numbers. But I actually had a question regarding, in our packet, it was on page 12 to Mr. Cummings, through the chair to Mr. Cummings. And I'm curious if, and I know you will not have an answer for us now, but I am hoping that staff, leadership, administration will take a look at these in light of what we approved as SEL goals for the teacher evaluation process, you know. And to not try to go back on COVID as an excuse, I mean, we provided as a board a tremendous amount of time for staff to make these connections, for staff to do their development, but to have this time. And I recognize that we don't have comparative data for this, but these were the teacher goals of the year, district-wide. And so I would just hope that staff gets this feedback specifically to know that however they measured their meeting of the goal, this is how the students are feeling. And I just hope that this data can form that conversation to a degree.
Anyone else? I have questions just about next steps in terms of sharing this information. This is really for you, Mr. Cummings, with staff. I'm sad that we're getting this right before summer. Like, it'd be great to have it earlier just to kind of move it forward. Some of these numbers are concerning. When I was reviewing this before our meeting, the 4% for prescription drugs, not your own for middle school, I think sure it jumped out at everybody. And just sitting on that for, you know, a number of months before taking action worries me a little bit. And I don't want to see too much time being delayed. I'm just wondering what, collectively, what your thoughts are on moving forward and how to engage staff, how to engage, get this information out to the larger community.
Well, the immediate issue in front of us is, timing-wise, the principals will be bringing back their school improvement teams in early July. I have this, the PowerPoint, this package, as well as another piece of information to send to the principals tomorrow, essentially to get them ready for the school improvement planning process with their teachers. They bring teacher teams in to do that work. One of the goals of the district next year, one of the goals of each of the schools, will be about bringing, as we've talked about, reunifying the community, bringing students back in, bringing the teachers back together. To Ms. Max and Canelli's point, this sets clear targets on needs of the students as they return to school and how the staff have to reach out. It's a strong interest of our staff as well around how they should be providing supports in the schools, in the classrooms, once students return. And I'll be meeting with some of the staff in the next couple of weeks to talk further about that. So there's a number of fronts that we can move forward on to address this and actually build action steps into the school and district improvement plan for '21, '22. And that work will go on during the month of July and August and be able to implement in September.
I don't know if any of you have, just in terms of any thoughts for the upcoming months with reaching out to other community partners. And it's okay if you don't. I know it's summer and it's been a long year, but.
I would only have this as a comment. For a dozen years, we have had the protocol that says, out of courtesy to the board, who has been very helpful in getting these surveys done through the school, we've always wanted to present to this board before we shared it to the larger community. This is actually the earliest that we have been able to present to the board. And Mr. Cummings was nice enough to, I think, talk to the chair and say, can we get it in front of the board now so that his staff can use it over the summer? But if the board would say, the sooner you get this out to service providers and to our staff, the better, and don't worry about us being first, if you gave us that message, that might speed it up a little bit.
Definitely a conversation moving forward on in terms of getting this out. And maybe that's why it seems like it's later, because we usually get it in the beginning of the year. I just note from past years for PTA that this information has been very valuable in terms of, you know, guiding some of their programming. Ms. McCarthy-Behi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I would just add, you know, the data is analyzed and we do have a partner who helps us with that, but that this very much is a community issue. And all of you have been incredible partners in our school, staff, and teachers as well. But we do work together with other community partners and hope to be actually going to visit the Board of Selectmen and other community groups as well to help them understand. Specifically, we are fortunate to have different funding sources. One of them has been related, for example, to opioids. So we have partnered with some of our pharmacies and with our Department of Public Health, which has been tremendous. So we're going to continue to reach out to those groups as well and keep doing this work year-round together with you, but again, with the community at large. It's really important to, I think, just continue to emphasize that message.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much for presenting tonight and for this information. You know, it's a lot to digest. And board members, if you have any other questions or if want to see the data in other formats, just reach out to Mr. Cummings and we can get that to you. You know, I know it's a lot and, you know, it's important information. So thank you. Okay. Presentation, climate survey results. Mr. Cummings, I don't know if you have any opening remarks on this?
No, I just want to thank Ms. Clark for putting this together and being here tonight to present, again, similar to the last survey and the results. The climate surveys have already, results have already been distributed to the individual schools for use in their planning for summer work and for '21, '22.
Thank you.
Good evening. Andrea Clark, Director of Communications. I'm going to take you through a quick overview at a district. at a district level of the climate survey results from this year. The surveys were fielded May 17th, and we got results back through June 9th from the various constituents. There were four separate surveys, one for parents and guardians, another for instructional staff for our secondary students, 612, and a fourth one for elementary students, 35. As Superintendent Cummings said, this data has been shared at the building level. And that is really where the value of the climate survey is, because it is used for the individual school improvement plans. So while I'm going to give you some top lines for the district, know that the individual building data is kind of what's really important here. We did look at overall response numbers versus 2018, 2019, which was the last time we did a climate survey. And even given the pandemic and survey fatigue, which we know our constituents are definitely feeling these days, we got a pretty good response rate and we were pretty happy with that. We got a good, strong response from parents. Going back and looking at survey data from the 2016, 17 survey, then there was a real push to move the numbers up in 2018, 2019. And we were glad to see that they held as well as they did in this year. This breaks out results by school populations. And again, for the most part, you know, we held pretty steady. There are some schools obviously got a better response from their populations than others, but they are looking at their individual numbers at the elementary level. And same with the secondary sites as well. So one of the things that I know is going to be a question from everyone is how do we compare the results of this year with prior climate surveys? And I think it's important to make a couple of distinctions. Obviously, we're dealing with how people's attitudes are right now as we're exiting the pandemic year. And it's really reflective of how they're feeling after what has arguably been one of the most challenging school years ever. The specific areas for improvement, as I said, are really being looked at at a building level. The other place that we have to sort of look at how we're comparing results is that while many of the questions have remained the same from year to year, the response scales have differed. Back in 2016, 17, there was a four-point scale, which went from strongly disagree, disagree, agree, to strongly agree. Last, the last time the survey was fielded in 2018, 2019, and I don't have an explanation for this, but it was a three-point scale, which people got to choose strongly disagree, agree, or strongly agree. And in 2018, 2019, the results were not reported by the six domains that we generally look at. So it was a little bit difficult to compare, certainly to the 2018, 2019. This year, we went with a five-point scale because we think it gives us some greater insight and subtlety into what's really happening. And we did report all of the question results by domain so that we could look at aggregated averages across domains. I'm just going to throw up this. I grabbed one question that was consistent across all three years that we fielded the climate survey, just to show you the differences in terms of scale. So this question appears on all three climate surveys. It says, I would recommend this school to friends and family. In 2016, 2017, over 95% of families said they agreed with that statement, that it was a positive. And there was a very small percentage, under 5%, that said they didn't agree with it. In 2018, 2019, even though their choices were only disagree, strong, agree, or strongly agree, it was still pretty close to that 95%, a little bit higher on the negative side. This year, looking at it on a five-point scale, what you see is a little over 81% having a positive response to that question. Again, it's just about 5% saying that they had a negative response, which is consistent. And now you have that 12% in the middle who are neutral, who are not saying they agree with it and not saying they disagree with it. And I think that that's a place for the buildings to really probe kind of what's behind that and what would it take to move those people to a positive view. And I think it's important to be able to take a look at that, you know, where people are not feeling that strongly one way or another. Why is that and what can we do to improve? Otherwise, all of your results look, you know, sort of very happy, very consistent. Traditionally, we've looked at the scores for the domains in terms of how they, if you say that one is a strongly disagree and five is a strongly agree, where do the domains tap out? And for our parent survey, we were averaging about four. So generally positive agreement on each of the five domains that we look at, institutional environment, teaching and learning, safety, interpersonal relationships, and communication. Interestingly, on the parent one, and we'll talk about this in a minute, safety was a little bit lower. And it's not necessarily physical safety that parents are concerned about. But we'll talk about that when we get to it. Again, looking at it now on a five-point scale in terms of these responses, we're holding pretty steady. So now we're not looking at a one to five. We're looking at the percentage of people who said agree, strongly agree, versus disagree, strongly disagree, as well as the neutral category. And what we're seeing is, if you had added the neutral and the positive, you'd come up with numbers similar to what we've seen in the past. I think that 20% who are neutral on these topics really deserve digging into and kind of understanding what would it take to move those groups to a more positive attitude about those domains? So in terms of the parent survey, just a couple of, you know, top-line insights that are kind of across the district. When it comes to institutional environment, parents want more involvement and more input into decision-making. I don't think that's a surprise to anyone here on the board. In terms of teaching and learning, there was definitely pandemic impact on learning a lot this year. 60% generally agreed that their children learned a lot this year. 25% were neutral. So, and I think we, you know, are happy to see that number, given what we've been through this year. On the safety issue, where we're dropping down is they're comfortable seeking help for their children. They feel that their children know where to go for help, but they're not sure that problems and conflicts are always handled fairly, that our rules and consequences are equitably applied. So that is something we need to look at. In terms of interpersonal relationships, generally positive, but they don't think that their feedback is always heard. And again, this is parents we're talking about. In terms of communication, they generally know what's happening in their schools and how their child is doing. They do want more information on academic expectations and they think that their kids should be getting more feedback on how they're doing as a matter of instruction. When we talk to our instructional staff, higher numbers across the domains. Again, the dip in safety there. And here, again, we see strong numbers across the board. Interesting, again, to look at that safety number and kind of probe into what some of the neutral reactions, responses are. So overall insights from the staff, there was definitely a pandemic impact on morale and culture. And we know that. And we know that we have our work cut out for us bringing staff back in the fall. In terms of teaching and learning, they clearly expressed a need for more professional development. The safety concern is around, do we have effective programs for student discipline? And are we, are there students who are being excluded? In terms of interpersonal relationships, again, generally positive. They don't feel that students are necessarily respecting differences with others. And that's something that we will continue to work on. Communication, we know this was a tough year with a lot of changes. They don't always feel well-informed. Leadership, which is an area that only appears on the instructional staff survey, shows very strong support of building leaders. And they feel very comfortable about that, which was very positive. In looking at our secondary students across the board, you'll see the numbers are generally lower. And they are followed, but they're following pretty much the same pattern as we've seen for the other surveys. Again, larger groups of neutral here. The communications question, nobody was neutral on that. They were either for it or they felt they were having enough communication or not. Again, much higher in the neutrals for the secondary students. So some key insights, and I don't think this is going to surprise anybody with teenagers, overall, they were less likely to strongly agree with anything. It was just sort of across the board. It was kind of interesting to see. In terms of institutional environment, and here's where this definitely jives with some of the information that you just heard from the CARES study. There are concerns about belonging, being able to express themselves, having a voice. I think one of the ways that we've looked at that with our secondary students in the past has been with, you know, are there enough extracurriculars that are of interest to students where they might have an opportunity to express themselves? What they're telling us is they have lots of opportunities to get involved in extracurriculars and there are many things out there. So that's not where they're lacking in terms of feeling that they're not being heard or having a voice. It is more instructionally based because in teaching and learning, what the message is is that they want more choice and voice in showing, demonstrating what they've learned, showing their learning. And I think that this year, in terms of changes that were made in instruction to accommodate students being remote a large portion of the time, we did give them more choice and voice. And that is something that we're hearing from instructional staff that they want to carry forward. So I think that we're moving in a direction where we should see improvement in that. Safety for, I'm sorry, Meg, just go back for a sec. Safety for them was about consequences not being clear and rules not being fairly applied. So again, there's consistency and are we treating everyone equitably? They would agree in terms of interpersonal relationships that there's not a lot of respect for differences, but they, and they don't always treat others well. And from a communication standpoint, they don't always feel well-informed either. Elementary, there was not a communications question on the elementary survey, which is why you're only seeing the four domains there. Those numbers are pretty consistent with the teacher and parent numbers, even a little bit higher. And as you see them here, very few are neutral, contrary to their secondary siblings. Elementary students love everything. I feel pretty strongly about it. So they love their schools. That came through loud and clear. In terms of teaching and learning, they feel pretty good about instructional practices. They wish their teachers would notice a little more when they need help. And I have to imagine that this year it was tough for, especially with a lot of the remote instruction for teachers to always recognize when an individual child needed help. Again, this issue about consistency of rules and consequences and how they're applied. Interpersonal relationships in this age range was interesting. They feel generally cared about, but only about 30% said that they didn't have a trusted adult within the school. So, you know, positive 70% do. I would still be at that age level concerned, about 30, who said they don't have someone that they feel they can go to in their school building. All of the data is now posted on the district website. If you go under District Information to School Climate and Climate Surveys, it is there. It is by building, all of the building-level data is there. And you can, everyone has access to it at this point.
Thank you for that presentation. Take it to the board with any questions, Mr. Peterson.
Hi, thank you for the presentation. I'm just curious, if you said this and I missed it, I apologize. Talking about the five-point scale, answer to questions. From a standpoint of where the insights were drawn from, are you just, are you processing the data or was there a narrative component of the survey?
It was, it was from the data itself. It was going back and looking at the specific questions in each domain as to where people felt, within a domain, kind of what were the questions that were bubbling up? But no, there was no narrative portion to that.
You don't have a list of comments?
No, there were no comments on this. It was all.
That was my general understanding.
Yeah.
And the information that's posted on the website is individual questions?
The individual questions are there. They, and all of the results by individual question for each building. They're grouped by domain so that you can see all of the questions in a particular domain for each survey.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Max Canelli? Followed by Ms. Curransey.
Yeah, I definitely hear that it was challenging that there's three different point scales. And no question that I agree that the five-point scale that currently being used is the most definitive or provides the most information. However, aside from that first slide, what were you able to garner from that in terms of any comparative? Because usually the point of this climate survey is not just the snapshot in time, but is we have school improvement plans that very much use this data to form plans going forward. So where were there improvements? And maybe you're going to need to get back to me about this later. But, you know, where were there marked improvements that show that the school improvement plans have been making positive progress versus where have there been ones that not necessarily tied to COVID where we have not made the progress we would want?
I think for that data, you really need to look at the building level and the build, the individual buildings are going to have to compare their data. That's not something that I would look, I would necessarily suggest that we look at on a district-wide level because each of the buildings in creating their own district improvement plan are looking at the specific areas from the prior survey that they're looking to improve upon. So I would, I would have to say we would need to go back to the principals and ask, you know, them in the comparison that they're doing with the prior data. On a building basis, what were the domains that they were concentrating on and where are they seeing the shifts? I think it's going to be extremely difficult to compare this year's data to the last go-round. And I know that the building improvement plans were based on that. But when you have a three-point scale that says disagree, agree, strongly agree, your answers are, you know, there are a lot of happy answers there. There are a lot of answers that skew towards, gee, everything's just fine. And particularly this year, with as challenging as it's been, I'm not surprised. I think the numbers held pretty well going back to 2016 and looking at, you know, over those, the set of three sets of data. Because it felt so difficult to compare it to all of the results, which looked so good in 2018, 19. And so going back to 2016, 17 and saying, was it really a question of we made that much progress or did we just change the scale? And, you know, that's a difficult question to answer. So I would think that in terms of looking at progress, you really want to look at an individual building level because they set their goals based on the prior climate survey.
See, unfortunately, that gives us kind of a conundrum because on the. See, unfortunately, that gives us kind of a conundrum because on the one hand, we need to keep our conversation at the district level. On the other hand, this data is extremely important to us because it's part of our expiring district improvement plan. So I, you know, kind of toss that over to the chair of, we want to use this data. If nothing else, then we could look at the 2016, 2017, which has four distinct areas which vaguely correlate with what we did now. But either we start getting into the business of looking in the schools, which is what we've avoided doing, or we come up with a meaningful angle for the district to look at this and for us to have as a board-level conversation. Because to just punt to the schools and then say, okay, I guess the board has no role in this, is not something I'm comfortable doing, considering it was in our district improvement plan.
I think that moving forward on this, you know, over the last two years, the district really, aside from the board looking at the school climate survey results, and I would defer to Mr. Cummings and Mr. Mancusi a little bit, the district-wide school climate team that included multiple stakeholders, that was set up in years past, I get the impression has not been meeting over the last couple of years. And I think that moving forward in the next year, I would like to see that type of committee come back district-wide and that might be a conversation for the next district improvement plan. This is just something that I've been thinking about in terms of even some of the questions that we ask moving forward. I see this, and I didn't go back to look at all the questions. I'm curious about subgroups. Like, did you see a difference in the answers for different subgroups? I'm thinking back a couple of years when we had that longer district improvement plan that I remember questions, do you feel safe in your, in safe in the building? Did you see, feel bullying? Really getting down to some of those type of questions, which I would like to see come back. You know, it's interesting to have both of these on the same night, the Fairfield CARES survey, to see how the environment in the buildings might affect some of the results on those surveys. So I know I'm not really answering your question right now, Mrs. Maxine Cannelly. I think that the building principals need to do a little bit of work and then come back to us with that feedback from what they're seeing at the building level to inform us. What do you think about that, Mr. Cummings?
Well, I would agree. I think that, I guess I question whether that should be in a district improvement plan to some degree, what you're looking for. I think that the survey data, the climate survey data does go to the building levels. It's part of the school improvement plans. It's therefore part of the district's oversight of the school improvement plans, the monitoring of those plans. I will tell you that we've had, we had several conversations this year and it was late in the game, so we didn't do anything with it. But the principals have real concerns about the questions as well. They don't feel that they necessarily pinpoint the specifics they need to develop an action plan. They're very broadly based. You know, we had been using, I think a survey we had paid for a number of years ago, a few years ago, was brought in-house and survey, different surveys were synthesized. So our expectation is that next year we'll be revising a survey or perhaps purchasing a survey to use that would be far more comprehensive, give us better information, and then therefore could be part of the work going forward. But I will tell you that since I've been in district and since we've had the school improvement plans, there's always, one of the three main goals is to do work around culture and climate and address the survey results that come out. And I think that what you're hearing from the principals is a justified frustration with their starting data points because they do want to use it and they do want to develop meaningful targets for moving forward.
I guess the only thing I disagree, I said, I do think it has a place in the district improvement plan, though. Are you, and actually, I already forget who said it, about not including this in a district improvement plan, that you don't see this as appropriate?
No, I think that we have to look at the way we write it in a district improvement plan. I think, you know, to some degree, the survey is not a district survey. So is there a way to approach it as we're going to then conduct a district survey as well? Or should the improvement plan be for the district, at the district level anyway, the process around which we make sure and support the schools in achieving the goals they want? Because if we help every school achieve its goal, the district level rises as a result.
Right. And the conversation, as I remember from 2014, was to the effect of, and that was a board that had to be held off of getting down into the nitty-gritty of schools, and it was on the assurance of, well, we're going to put pressure on the big-picture numbers, knowing that that then means district staff is going to be going at the schools that are causing, prompting a lack of progress, if that makes sense, so.
I would only take issue with the choice of your kind of combative language in that. It's very vivid. But yes.
That was the 2014 board, Mr. Cummings, so.
Very combative and going at, yes.
Yes, I.
We say support and lift up.
Yes. I don't disagree, but that was a snapshot, flash from the past right there. Then I just had one other question to three separate points, Ms. Clark, that you raised, all three of which were slight bombs, and I'm not sure if they were the word choices you intended, and so I want to check on that. And this is coming from the three bits of articulation regarding summary of the comments. On the Parent Guardian Insights, you referenced the 60% of agreeing as being a positive thing under teaching and learning. And what am I misreading? Because I don't read that 60% as being a positive.
The 60% was a response to one specific question in that domain, which was, my child learned a lot this year. And frankly, with the pandemic, I would have expected, and I mean, the challenges that we had across the district, I would have expected that number from parents to be even lower. When you look at 60% agreeing and 25% neutral on my child learned a lot, it was that one question that I was referring to.
And that I would agree with. It was paired with pandemic impact on learning a lot this year.
Yeah, that was the one, the one question about learning a lot. I apologize. That was my shorthand.
Right, but it's, okay, so just on clear, because I read it as 60% agree that the pandemic had a lot of impact on learning this year?
No.
Okay, that's what I wanted to check.
Yeah, okay, I apologize for that. That was.
The next one was on the Instructional Staff Insights. And you used the phrase, our work is cut out for us bringing staff back. And are you, is, do we have data that's indicating we might be looking at Exodus?
No, 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 I didn't mean that physically. I meant that when staff comes back in the fall, we know that the idea of rebuilding community is going to be among staff, not just with students, is going to be very critical. This was, this year had a definite impact on morale, staff morale and staff culture.
Thank you. Again, just wanted to clarify that. And then on the secondary students, six through 12, you use, and again, quoting here, that there was not a lot of respect for differences.
There were specific, specific question, they're not questions, they're statements. And you respond in terms of your agreement with the statement. The statement was students respect differences with, among other students. And they did not generally agree with that statement. That was driving, that's one question in that domain, but their disagreement with that statement was driving a good portion of what we saw overall in that domain.
So just to be clear, would you, so that was, would a majority of our students at the secondary level, a majority indicate that there was not a respect for differences among our students?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Guernsey?
Oh, thank you. And thank you for putting together this presentation. I have a couple of comments and they're sort of questions, and I'm still trying to understand some of this. Under the elementary school students, three to five insights, one of the things that obviously really stuck out here is about 30% don't have a trusted adult. So like Ms. Maxine Cannelly, I was more interested in expecting to see comparative data here. But this is an example of an area that probably doesn't need that kind of comparison for it to be something that we want to act on right away. And hopefully, that's something that we can think about as we welcome students in this uplifting and supportive way as they come back to school next year. So that's sort of a comment, but it's also, you know, it has me thinking, you know, what, how do I interpret this? Because am I looking still for comparisons or are we just looking at this year? I'm still kind of going back and forth with that. Under the Instructional Staff Insights, under safety, there is a bullet that says concerns about student discipline and exclusion of others. Can you explain what that means, especially the exclusion of others part?
There, I actually need to, I just want to go back to the actual questions so that I can pull the right question there. There was a, the first part refers to a question that says the school's discipline program is effective. And there was a fairly significant group who disagreed or strongly disagreed. There was, let me put it this way, less than half of staff in total agreed with that statement. So, you know, there is some concern there. The other one, the other one that jumped out at me is there was a statement, there are efforts in this school to reduce cliques and social ostracism. And again, there, there were less than, it was about 40% that were either neutral or disagreed or strongly disagreed with that statement. So that was something that jumped out in that domain as being a question that, you know, didn't sort of easily fit into, you know, a positive view.
Okay, thank you. I guess just in general, my feedback about this survey is it doesn't seem to be super impactful at the board level, and I hope that it is for the individual schools. And I'd love to hear more about how this trickles down to them and how they're responding to it. Thank you.
I think when the, certainly in the fall, one of the things that we can make available, or will make available to the board is that the school improvement plans will be posted online. And I can also talk in the fall further about how we're changing the school improvement planning process during the course of next year.
Any other questions? Any other questions about the school climate survey? Thank you. Oops, sorry. Ms. Jacobson.
Sorry, one more question. Thank you. Similar to the question I asked on Fairfield CARES, we know that there can be a big discrepancy on a lot of host of issues between grade six and grade 12. And sometimes we bucket all of these grades into one report. So I know that each individual school is available online, like you mentioned before. But if we were to break this up into three different distinct groups, three to five, six to eight, and nine to 12, and we had that middle school group in the middle there, would you say in looking at that while you went through with this and looked through this, that you would see a variance by level versus also subgroup population, but we already talked about that. I want to talk about specifically grade level.
At this point, I haven't broken out the six, 12 by level, and we can certainly do that and take a look at it.
It was a question, right, for grades, so that you could do that, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we can get that.
It was a question, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So there's only a couple of slides here that have that, so I was just wondering, at some point, if we could just see that broken out by six, eight, and then nine, 12?
Sure.
Mr. Cummings, do you think that it would be helpful for the board to just give feedback for things and moving forward and looking at this that they would want to see in terms of a school climate, if anything is missing from this information?
I think we can do that. I mean, like I said, I think one of the things we're going to do next year is look at revising the surveys overall. And we can bring, you know, a draft of that to the board, what we're looking at, particularly if we're going to be in the process of purchasing something.
And I would, again, just to, having years ago been on a community group where parents got together and just ranked different questions and what questions we think need to be asked, and is there a trusted adult in the building, I think was probably the most important question very often. And if you get that right, that's a very important first step in terms of a lot of the other challenges that I think that we're facing, you know, with just building a better school climate for, at all levels.
I think one of the things that we want to look at as we look at overhauling the climate survey, which we are certainly going to do, is there are a number of national surveys that are done. And when we talk about points of comparison, it would be helpful to look at some of the surveys where there are national norms or even state norms that we can, you know, compare to. So it's one of the things that we're going to consider as well.
Thank you. And this is, in case you can tell, near and dear to my heart, having been on school climate surveys at all different levels through the years and just seeing how these surveys, you know, when you do the survey, and the key now is to take that information and move it forward to really elicit some change. So I appreciate the board's questions and I'm looking forward to, you know, to getting better at this next year in terms of a more meaningful data collection. Okay, moving on to old business. Approval of Student Participation Study and Exploration of Therapy, Dog Services, and Education Settings. The recommended motion, the Board of Education approved the Students' Participation Study and Exploration of Therapy, Dog Services, and Education Settings. Ms. Jacobson, seconded by Mrs. Pitko. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, we will take it to the board for a vote. We haven't, we can, but being that we have the public here, we'll get back into the groove of our old meetings prior to the vote. If anybody would like to give comment on this agenda item before we vote, invite you to come forward. Seeing none, we'll take it to the board for a vote. All in favor? Motion carries 9-0. Thank you. Adoption of Policy 5141.3, Health Assessments and Immunizations. At the Board of Education, adopt Policy 5141.3, Health Assessments and Immunizations. Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, seconded by Mr. Peterson. Mrs. Maxine Cannelly?
Yes, just one word about this. I'm sure you all noticed that there was some of the language in blue. This language resulted from our last policy meeting where we did make a couple of additional changes. These were all verbatim at the suggestion of Jill Mitchell. These were not, this was not the idea generated from policy committee, and otherwise, it's the same. And I didn't receive any questions, but if there are any others, I'd be happy to take them now.
Any questions for Mrs. Maxine Cannelly? Seeing none, we'll take it to the public. Anyone like to give comment prior to the vote? Seeing none, take it back to the board for a vote. All in favor? Motion carries 9-0. Moving forward, that the Board of Education adopt Policies C19.1, Temporary Policies and Regulations Related to the COVID-19 Pandemic. And I have a motion to put that forward. Mrs. Gerber, second. Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Maxine Cannelly.
Again, I received no questions on this. A reminder that this is just meant to hold these same policies over while we see what comes out of the summer. Policy Committee is planning a special meeting for approximately August 17th. That's what we're holding for now, at which point we will go back and revisit to see if there's anything, either, you know, from staff recommendation, statute issues, executive order issues, what do we need to retain and what in fact can naturally expire? If all of them are going to expire, then I believe we'd need to take no action because as of this policy vote, it would happen naturally on August 24th. And again, that was a date very specifically picked because it precedes the return of staff to work for the 2021, 22 school year. And so that was the notion here.
Any questions? Seeing none, we'll take it to the public. If anyone wants to give comment, please come forward. If anyone wants to give comment, please come forward. Seeing none, back to the board for a vote. All in favor? Motion carries nine zero. Moving on to new business, Food Service Financial Summary. Mrs. Munsell?
Hi there, Doreen Munsell, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services. We're here for our annual food service discussion. With me tonight is Maura O'Malley, our Food Service Director, and Rick Emery is a district manager for Whitsons. Just like everything else, the past 15 months, food service program was affected by the COVID. We operated in 1920 under the National School Lunch Program until through March 13th. As of the 16th, we were under the SSO program seamless, summer, summer seamless option. In 2021, we had four days, the first four days of school were under the National School Lunch Program, and then we transitioned to SSO. We also began a, under the SSO option, we began a breakfast slash snack program on April 1st, which helped, that's when we, the kids came back full time, and we, we had extended lunch period. So that helped children with the long gaps in, in time. And it also helped the program financially. We did lose money last year, and we're, you know, losing, we're projected to lose money again this year. Last year, we ended with a cash balance of about $360, and this year, it's projected to be about $156. Prior to COVID, balances were more like in the $970,000, as much as $970,000. We did provide a meal comparison. She, as we've always done in the past, but those, then, you know, it's just informational. It's, it's really hard to compare them. You can't compare them. They're not comparable because of the SSO. We had the enrollment, average enrollment numbers there, but, you know, under seamless, the summer seamless option, anybody 18 or under was eligible for a meal, and it didn't matter where they picked them up. So it's just more to show you in total how the program did. We, the, the summer seamless program has been extended through next year, next school year. And we also provided a comparison, as we've done in the past, with the DRGB and Southern Fairfield County choices, what they're, what they're doing for next year. Most of them are going with the seamless SSO option, without any impact on pricing. So we're recommending to, to continue with the SSO program, as are the majority of those districts, and there would be no, you know, no need to consider the pricing. During the third quarter report, we did have a, noted a minimum transfer to food service of $100, $200,000. And we talked about what the maximum could be. And I think an $800,000 number was mentioned. Because the monthly expenses are lower this year, that maximum is more like $680. And with the projected balance of the 156 this year, that's where we're recommending the 525 transfer, a $525,000 transfer to the food service program, which we'll, we'll talk about in the, the financial discussion. So I think that's a recap of everything, food service. And Maura in here, Rick are here for program questions, if you have any program questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Asa, any questions? Okay, seeing none.
So we do need, we're also here for the healthy food certification vote.
That the Board of Education approve participation in the Healthy Foods Certification Program for the school year 2021, 2022 as follows. Seeing no objection, can we have the reading of all that? Seeing none. I'm going to have a motion. Mr. Asa, seconded by Ms. Guernsey. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, we'll take it to the public. If any members of the public have any comment to give on this, invite you to come forward. Seeing none, back to the board for a vote. All in favor? Motion carries nine zero. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Financial report and approval of budget transfers for the 2020, 2021 school year. That the Board of Education approve the line item transfers for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year as detailed in the financial statement per enclosure number six. Can I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, second. Ms. Guernsey? The floor is yours.
Okay, so this is, is a little different than what we've done in the past to, to, sign of the times. We have, we, we did realize additional savings when we updated the projection. These numbers are as of June 16th. We've had additional savings in utilities. And I'm, I apologize, but we didn't have enough room to show the, the delta. We had savings in utilities. Again, electrical usage declined. Non-lapsing maintenance accounts had additional savings. COVID accounts, there was additional, I shouldn't say savings. We didn't expend, we didn't, our projected expenses weren't as high. So, you know, special ed declined. There's a slight change in personnel. So the net delta was additional savings of $371,000. Let's see. Let me, let me go through the column first. So you'll see on pay, on, on the first column, line 57, that brought us down to a projected balance in the general fund of $740. And then with the non-lapsing, the, between COVID and non-lapsing, there was a deficit of $215. Then here comes the, the transfer, recommended transfer for food service to balance our budget to zero. So because we were seeing additional savings in these certain areas, we were able to release funds back to maintenance of about $340,000 and $100,000 to food ser, $100,000 to instruction. And then also changed the, increased the transfer to food service to the 525 from the 200 that was there before. Column two, because we have that projected deficit on line 66 in the non-lapsing fund, we can't leave that there. We can't overexpend that fund. So we have to take that $215,000 and that's, and spread it out in column two amongst the major classifications so that we could get, get them in the proper classification before we recommend the transfers, because those expenses have to go in there. So that's what that column is about, which totals the, the negative 215 on line 57. Column three is the total of the two. Column four, of the two columns. Column four is the recommended transfer of, to food service of 525 to net out to a zero balanced budget.
Thank you for walking us through that. Any questions for Mrs. Munsell? Mr. Peterson?
I'd like to go to the food service issue. Back in the beginning of, month ago, was it a month ago? You projected, you were talking about adding $200,000 to that, to that account. You seemed to say at the time that that was, was sufficient. Is there a reason that we're considering the 525 now?
It wasn't, I didn't mean it to say that it was sufficient. It was a minimum. It was an app, it was, that was a bare minimum. And then we talked about, you know, the maximum was $800,000. I think the feeling is because we have the money available and because the, the program does need to be, you know, we, we do need to sustain the program into a healthy financial situation, that seemed to be a reasonable amount to transfer.
With that, talking about the expense issue, if I'm recalling correctly, are we, are we currently about $80,000 in the hole? Didn't we have that conversation?
I'm sorry, $80,000 in the hole?
Right, it's, we were talking about that, that adding $200,000 would leave us with a positive $120,000 cash balance in that account.
Something like that, yeah.
All right. So the fundamental structural problem, as I look at the, at the food service table, you know, and obviously COVID years are, COVID has been an unusual year, but we are having a decline in income from meal sales. Correct? That's a, that's an ongoing trend. Do you, do you think that this is going to need to become something that we're going to have to top off every year? Or do you think that adding the 525 now is going to solve the problem?
I think it'll solve the problem. You know, as long as we get back to a normal situation.
So over the intermediate term, if meals go back up to the 1920 level, we'll be able to continue with that level of?
We shouldn't have to, we shouldn't have to transfer money there again. The breakfast program, I'd say significantly improved over, over the past couple of months, significantly improved the financial situation.
Do we have a, do we have a whole year number for that? I mean, I'm looking at, at the 2021, since June projection for breakfast, it's $14,000. So have we been doing that for, for three months?
Two and a half months, yeah.
All right, and we think that that, that addition next year with a full year is going to be enough to cover a deficit by, by those additional meal sales?
On its own, no.
All right.
Ms. Asa?
So piggybacking on Mr. Peterson's commentary here, what does fix it? What do we have to do so that we can operate our meal services program without consistently losing money and having to have such a buffer?
I wouldn't say we consistently lose, lost money. We, we've lost money under the pandemic.
Okay, so to that point, going pre, pre-pandemic, what was our average cash balance for the previous few years ballpark? And what was our average loss ballpark for those three previous years prior to the pandemic?
We didn't have a loss. We have, we had a gain.
Okay, so, okay.
Isn't it, isn't there a loss in, in actual 2020? Or are you counting that as a pandemic year?
1920, we did, because we ended the year in the, in the pandemic.
I know, but it's, it's a, it's a deficit. It's a $100,000.
We had a loss.
All right.
Ms. Asa?
Okay, so a line, along that line of thinking, as we come out of the pandemic, and as we have to have breakfast, and we get back to a more normal routine, you would not anticipate us having these kinds of losses moving forward on a regular basis, correct?
Correct.
And how much is in the cash balance now or will be?
It's projected to be $156,000.
$1,000. So what you're saying is adding 525 and 156, we're going to be at $670-something thousand for a program that is not expected to lose money and need that much buffer?
It needs operating cash.
For, for startup at the beginning of each year, correct?
Right.
And approximately how much operating cash do we need to float and then recover?
I don't know.
Well, the, what I'm getting at here is that when you pitched the hundred, $200,000 to, to build this buffer, I was in full support of that. I thought it made sense. To me, this number seems excessive. And to me, if we have completed all of the maintenance projects, and we're, we're at June 30th, basically, right? So we're not releasing money to any other area to complete projects in time for June 30th, right? So it's either the 525, vote tonight to food services, or we take a portion of that, and whatever's left goes back to the town. Correct?
That's what would happen if we didn't, if we didn't transfer or didn't spend it.
Okay, so based on that scenario, I, for one, think that we should be transferring $200, $250,000 plus the 157 in there, and that we should be giving the balance of that back to the town. In a pandemic year, when we're coming out, we have used the non-lapsing funds, we've gone over, we have recovered it, and we're showing a $500,000 surplus at the end of our year with no time left to spend it on anything else but food service, my feeling is that a portion of that should go back to the town.
Ms. Munsell, just to follow up to that, what if, you know, we're, things are looking very bright now with the pandemic, but, you know, there's still some uncertainty. If it doesn't bounce back, and next year is not a normal year, and we're still seeing a loss, you know, what would happen if that balance got to zero? You know, what would we need to do then in order to mitigate that?
Let me say this. We're not the only district in the state or the country that's in this situation. Ultimately, the feds finally determined that they had to do something to help food service programs, because this is a federal program. So it wasn't until the ESAR ARP that they allowed the loss of, to cover for the loss of revenue in a program like this. So you would have to go to something like that.
We would have to use some of that money to cover this if we should, if we should get to zero. So our option now is to use some of our money from the budget to cover, to give a bigger buffer than we thought that we needed, potentially last month or two months ago, whenever we last had this discussion. Okay, thank you. Ms. Jacobson, your, your hand up?
This starts July 1, though, basically, the next school, the next fiscal year, right? It's not just the June 30th. So if we're talking about, you know, maybe being back in a more normal time next year, we might be thinking about the end of August going into September. But really, we're doing meals throughout the summer, correct? We're not, we're not doing that for our summer school. We're not doing any, really, they're not, okay. My other question was, I believe in one of the documents, you said that we needed at least two to three months of operating costs? But we don't?
No, the maximum. Because it's a federally subsidized program, the maximum cash that you can hold is three times the monthly cost of the program.
There's a minimum and a maximum. So what we're talking about is where we want to be between the minimum and the maximum. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Maxicanelli?
Just one quick question about the food service. At what point does the clause in the Whitsons contract for the amount of money that they, and again, I don't want to use the wrong contract language here, but that they promise or guarantee back to the district? Of course, it didn't apply these last two years, but is it assumed that that kicks in for next year?
Yes.
And so if you, I don't know if you can refresh my memory on what happens if they do not meet that promised amount? Of managing us to that profit?
If it's, if it's a normal year and there's not major deviation in the meals or I forget what the other conditions are, that would prevent them from making that kind of money, we would be guaranteed it's 130,000.
So the, the idea of this extra buffer or excessive, depending on how you view it, is because of the uncertainty of will next year be a that regular year where Whitson's can be held accountable for their contract? Is that correct?
This is just an infusion of cash. This isn't, this isn't anticipating whether they're losing money or, or making money next year. This is just making sure that there's enough cash, you know, in, in the till to run, to, to operate the program. And, you know, it's like having a checking account, you know, you don't want it, you don't zero your checking account or savings account out. You know, you want to make sure that you have something in the bank to, to run, you know, operate on.
And so, but we don't have any idea if this is the, in the ballpark of the normal amount that we would have operated with in 2016 to start the school year, 17, 18, 19 to start those school years?
Okay, this is almost between a two and a half and $3 million operation. 156,000 in the bank to run that kind of operation just doesn't, and it just doesn't seem logical even.
I, I, I don't disagree with that at all. I was just looking to characterize the amount that we are looking to infuse into it as being consistent with past practice or, because I honestly can't remember.
Well, two, in, in 11, 2011, 12 and 1213, when I first started, there, the first year was a $2 million, that was a big cut from the town in our budget. The food service program for those two years paid the district something like 300,000, $330,000 over those two years, so it was in the reverse. I don't, I don't know how else to answer your question.
Mr. Peterson?
Do we have an, an exact figure for what that three-month maximum expenses would be for us? You say this in the ballpark of $800,000?
No, 680.
All right, well, 680 is what we want to top it up to with the, with the 156 plus the 525.
Right.
So you're saying that you want to, you don't, you, because you said at one point you want to, you want to keep it, this is operating expenses, this is, this is cash flow stuff.
Right.
You said you want to keep it in the, in the middle of the range. Why are we talking it to 100% of the max? Like, I guess that's, that's where I'm, I'm confused. Because we're not, you know, that, that doesn't, that doesn't strike me as prudent, that strikes me as excessive. And I, I, you know, and I don't know, and maybe you have a better sense of context about this, what practice is in other school districts. Do they take advantage of that max? Are they, do they keep their? Do you, you see what I'm saying?
I would say they would try to, the, the goal would be to be as close to that as you can get.
Okay, that's different than what you said earlier when you said you wanted to be at the middle of the range, so it's hard to know how to evaluate that. I, I, I mean, I'm, it's a serious question, like, you know, from, from a cash management standpoint, I understand where it would be comforting to be at the max, but that doesn't mean that that's necessarily the prudent level to be at.
My recommend, my recommendation was based on the fact that we had the money, it's our program, and it needed cash infusion, so that was just a recommendation.
Ms. Jacobson?
Pre-pandemic, in the years that you've been with us, where has this number typically held at this point in the year?
Say that again?
Before the pandemic, in the years that you've been around, where, what is the number that we're normally floating around in this account?
In the eight, I'd say between, in the, between 850 and 975.
So this number that your suggestion is actually well below what we've normally carried?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson.
I should also mention that, you know, as, as time went on this year and we were looking at the dire situation, I asked Whitson's to, if there was anything they could do for us, and they gave us a credit of $50,000 on our management fee to, to help with the situation. And that, that's built into these numbers also.
Thank you, Ms. Maxinelli?
Just one other question regarding this year-end spending. Does this now take care of all of the proj, projects that we had budgeted for? Or does this indicate that anything remains frozen, undone? I, I, maybe there were a, a position or two that had not been filled, but for maintenance projects, does this cover everything and technology projects?
You're referring to, to the document. I'd ask Mr. Papa George to come up. I, I will say to you that it does not cover everything, but he can kind of give you a better sense of what that is.
And so can we get a sense of what didn't get done?
Yes, if he can come up.
Good evening. So actually, this, this does cover, oh. Is that better? All right, so actually, this does cover us into and allow us to play some catch-up on stuff that did not happen last year or even the year before because of unforeseen projects within the maintenance department. Anything that was budgeted for in this budget year ending, it will be completed at this time because of this spend-out.
Well, wonderful to hear. So when can we get the color on what hasn't been done? Because I, again, interesting that you reference even on a previous budget cycle that this is playing catch-up on that, which I appreciate being done. So that makes me wonder, I always like keeping a list out there of here's what was approved, all town bodies, this board wasn't, had to be held. So where does that leave us? And I don't know if that's something you can do off the top of your head or if that's something that can be provided to the board later.
I, let me say, when I say catch-up, I'm not referring to budgeted projects within the buildings. I'm talking more along the lines of line items such as, you'll see there's a lot of paving on here. We did very little paving over the last two years. The year before last, we didn't pave much at all because of the Osborne roof issues, so we ended up diverting money from paving into that. And then last year, we did very little paving as well. We held it throughout this year so that we knew we could do something at the end if possible, but it was something that if we needed to hold, we could.
Right, but the point is it had been part of our approved budget and we weren't able to spend it as it had been originally approved.
Yes, so the line items for paving were held.
Right.
For, and now that it's been released, we are moving forwards with those.
And, which I enormously appreciate.
I want to make sure, I, I think though you have, you have a question, kind of the way I'd phrase it is what remains on the to-do list, the adopted to-do list? Yeah, and you also mentioned, when you asked me the initial question about technology projects, and neither Ms. Burns nor Dr. Parrish are here tonight, so we'd have to get you that information, but I also think based on that to-do list scenario, Mr. Papa George, we, we would need just to be, provide the board with a list of what remains in a sense undone, what might be carried over to another budget cycle.
Are you referring to the one, two and three priority lists that we normally put out?
No, I'm referring to the 2020, 2021 approved budget through all the town bodies. And this could be curriculum, this could be instruction, this could be technology, this could be maintenance, this could be staffing, issues that we had budgeted for. In other words, I'm trying to anticipate things that, no, that's still a priority and, and I want to know early, early heads up that this is something that we might need to look at for next year.
Yep, I can pull that together for the maintenance side.
We'll work on it from all the departments.
Mr. Peterson?
Hi, maybe, just to Mrs. Maxinelli's point, is there an implied question in there of is there, is it possible to spend some of this $525,000 on projects between now and, and July 1st?
I had sort of assumed if that had been possible, it would have been done, but you're right, it should have been brought up. So that's a fair point. I really was just looking ahead to next year that these might be things that come back to us again and this would be the reminder early that it's not a new point, but.
Right, so I'll just, I'll just ask the question, is there, is there any possibility with the, with the week remaining in the fiscal year of taking care of any of the items on the to-do list with some of these, some of this $525,000?
I, I don't believe so, I would, I, I don't think so at all. I think what you're, you're seeing is an attempt this year to use the remaining funds against things that we still need. But, but like many things now, you know, there might have been something originally budgeted in instruction, a relatively low-cost item that we're thinking at this point we can hold off on, or we don't, you know, something else is superseded that's need. So I think the, having spoken with Mr. Papa George about his list, what he's got on his list is what he believes he can get done through all the approving agencies and everything in time, and, and anything else would be too much of a reach to get done.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Jacobson?
One thing I was looking for on here, I hope, and didn't see was painting, so I don't know if that's something that's been resolved or not. And then my other question was that as we get to a later agenda item on our sections for next year, I see that certain schools might be changing and I was just wondering if those classrooms are going to be needing anything that they don't have now in them, should we need to increase section sizes at certain schools?
I, let me, well, you want to answer that first question?
I can answer the part about painting. Actually, we, we, we have, we actually have an ongoing list of classrooms, areas and buildings that need to be painted. We reached out to our contracted vendors for painting. We're still compiling quotes from that. Unfortunately, we could not get them in in time because of all the lack of, they don't have the staff available to work to get the quotes out. There's literally one gentleman trying to quote multiple districts and multiple towns all at one time because everyone seems to be coming to him right now saying, what can you get done for me before July 1st?
So to your second question, there's two approaches. The first approach, the default approach, is that if sections are added, we're going to go to schools that are at the same time losing sections and inventory those materials and move those materials into the added section. When we are still behind, then we, as we've done in the past, we'll reallocate funding from the instructional division to, to do that support for those classrooms so that they're fully, they're, they're in an equitable state with their grade-level peers.
Any other questions? Ms. Asa?
Is there any more to this presentation? Okay, so then I, based on what I said before and based on what Ms. Manziel has presented to us, you know, I, I still see, let's say a hypothetical $275,000 going into food services, giving us a over $400,000 buffer, which I would be very pleased with. That being said, the motion on the table is that the Board of Education approve the line item transfers and everything else that it says here in the agenda. I would like to propose an amendment to that motion at this time, if this is the appropriate time to do that, Madam Chair.
Yes.
So I would like to propose an amendment so that $275,000 go to school lunch as indicated on line 68 and $250,000 be returned to the town.
Do I have a second for that motion? Mr. Peterson? Any discussion? Seeing none, any, um, public, any public comment on the amendment to the motion? Seeing none, we'll take it to the board for a vote. Um, Ms. Maxinelli, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so just to clarify, because again, I, I thought I'd ask the question. Apparently I did not ask it well because Ms. Jacobson asked it in a manner that Ms. Manziel was able to address, but that we're normally starting the school year within anywhere from 600 to $900,000 checking account, I'm going to use that phrase, checking account for this food services. So if we were to approve the motion presented by Mr. Asa, we would be starting next school year with half of the recommended amount in the checking account for the food services to start the year. Is that correct? Coming in with half the normal amount, very rough math here, that normally we would be starting with for the food service account?
We have had in the vicinity of 850 to say 975 in, in the account, an ending cash balance at the end of the year. I was recommending to get it up to 680. If you do anything less than that, and when you say recommended, that wasn't the recommendation, but it's your prerogative.
Well, the, the 600,000 plus is the recommend, is the staff recommendation, correct?
It's a maximum. The 680 is a maximum.
Okay, I'm sorry to ask this again, but I, I thought that the num, I thought that was the 800 to $900,000 number that you said that is normally what we are starting the year with.
Typically, that's what.
In the past, that's what it was, yep.
The, the $680,000 is our recommendation. That's, that's what's on your transfer sheet.
Okay, thank you.
That is our recommendation, but in years past, the balance is significantly higher than what you're recommending for this year. Ms. Asa?
So you said roughly between two and a half and $3 million is the operating budget for the food services, correct? An annual basis?
Yeah, okay, yep.
Okay, so if I split the middle and go into $2.75 million operating and I take 10% of that, that's $275,000. While I understand that it's been great that we've had this surplus in the past, this cash in the account, I have trouble swallowing needing much more than a 10% reserve for a program that has historically in pre-pandemic times not lost money and what my recommendation here brings us to $400,000. So I just wanted to reiterate the fact that you have stated tonight that in general, this is not a money loser. This is, this money in this account is to help get operations up and running. Are you saying that $400,000 would not be enough to get up and operating next fall and let's say hypothetically, the year after that? I see someone from Whitson's coming up here, feel free to.
Just before we get to that, can I have a motion to extend the meeting? Ms. Jacobson? Extend it to midnight, seconded by Ms. Guernsey, all in favor of extending the meeting. Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxinelli, Ms. Guernsey, all opposed. Ms. Pico, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Peterson, motion carries, 6-3. Thank you.
I'm sorry, the 10% you're talking about is only one month's operating expenses. You need at least three months' operating expenses to, to float the account because we, at the end of each month, we put in our claims and it's a month to 45 days before we get our money back from the state. So you need some operating capital.
Well, what do we do last year?
I don't know what was left in the account last year.
All the checks are run through the Board of Ed and then at the end, and then we reimburse, the food service reimburses the Board of Ed.
But we didn't have $600,000 in the account last year. So if we, how, how can you sit there and say we need three months' operating expenses to make this happen when we didn't have that last year? And if we didn't have this $525,000 surplus this year, what would we be doing going into next year with $157,000 not feeding our? going into next year with $157,000 not feeding our kids?
Can I ask, would it mean that we're freezing other things in the budget, so because we're having to borrow from other line items, then that means other things would get frozen?
Temporarily, because this is an operating startup.
I'm not a finance person, I'm just trying to understand how the finances of that happen.
But it's, the USDA program doesn't allow us to pay the board back any money you put out. So if we're, we run short and you want to give us, the Food Service account, an influx of cash when we run short, there's no ability for us to pay it back. The money can't go back from the C-Fund, the Food Service count. You can only do it once at the end of the year.
So again, what would we be doing going into next year if we didn't have this situation with $157,000 in the account?
You'd have to, you'd have to get a loan. You have to pay interest on the money. You would, you'd be floating, you'd be out of, you'd be underwater.
So Ms. Manzell, we wouldn't be able to take that money from anywhere else in the budget to float it?
If the Food Service program runs out of money, it would, it has to come out of the Board of Ed.
And then in theory, the profits would go back to that account at the end, correct?
Into what account?
Back into this capital account that this surplus money is going into, whatever you want to call it. Where would the profits go if we have profits from our Food Service program? Would those go back into here?
They have to stay in the Food Service program.
So yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments before we take it to vote? Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I apologize if this has already been stated, but how much did we have at the start of 2021 school year in Food Services? Do we have that number? 360, okay. And were there any issues with that? I mean, I don't recall there being any. I'm just trying to get a sense of just what the number was. So it was 360?
We haven't reimbursed the board anything yet for this year.
Okay, but I'm just trying to get a sense of what the number was. You know, we're saying right now, we're talking about the different possibilities. If Mr. Asa's motion goes through, if your recommendation goes through, the different numbers that would be moving forward for 2122. And I'm just trying to get a sense of how that compares to what we were at for 2021.
One of our problems is, and I don't know if this is accurate or not, you can correct me if I'm wrong, because we're so reliant on federal reimbursement this year, which is a little slow to come in, I'm not, and I apologize for not having this, but I don't know what the breakoff, you know, what the breaking point is. We'll have to book that as a receivable, but we won't actually have the cash until whenever those claims are paid. So I'm in a situation now where I have to hope that I have enough cash in there to reimburse the board what I have to reimburse them through June 30th. Is that?
Okay, I mean, I guess what I'm struggling with right now is that I, also, I am not a finance person, and, you know, I like to want to defer to you as someone who obviously knows these numbers a lot better than I do. I guess I do have a little bit of confusion just in terms of, you know, what you had stated before as being okay and what we are now. And I understand that the numbers have changed, and this is your new recommendation now, and, you know, I absolutely get that. I guess I'm just trying to understand, I guess, what would happen if Mr. Asa's motion carries and we end up with the smaller amount? What would the negative possible ramifications of that be? Understanding that, I know you don't have a crystal ball, and you can't say definitively, but I'm just trying to get a sense of what would, what would possibly be a problem with that happening.
That we don't have enough cash to reimburse the board what we've already expended. I don't know what that break, I apologize, but I don't know what that breaking point, I don't have that breaking point with me right now.
Okay, thank you.
And just for going back, I mean, I don't think that the 200 or whatever the number was when we last spoke about this was necessarily, that was the recommendation at the time for the money that we had available?
That wasn't a recommendation, that was a stated minimum, absolute minimum that-
That you would suggest-
To zero out the account, right, to bring it to zero.
Okay, Mr. Peterson?
I'm going to try to ask Mrs. Gerber's question in a very concrete way. So we ended the 1920 school year with $360,186 in the account. Was that enough to cover our opening expenses for the 2021 school year? Or did you have to borrow money from the Board of Ed budget to cover that? I assume that's what Mrs. Gerber was asking.
We started the school year, and we can, all our checks are cut out of the Board of Ed account. So whenever Food Service pays anything, whenever we pay anything for Food Service, it comes out of the Board of Ed account. Typically, on a monthly basis or a quarterly basis, we reimburse the board. It's hard to say, I can't say that the 360 was enough, because we had, we didn't reimburse the board after the first three months. And I'm saying now that at the end of the year, I don't, I apologize, but I don't have that breaking point of how much cash is needed to reimburse the board, knowing that we will, we are still due claim payments from the feds.
Ms. Jacobson?
So if I'm understanding you correctly, you can't answer the question if that is enough that we have in there at the beginning of the school year, because we haven't been paid yet?
Right.
Thank you. And the next question, unless Mr. Peterson had a follow-up to that? Did the fact that we started the school year as well, and for most of the year, weren't, didn't necessarily have all students in building, or purchasing lunches, or anything like that, have to do with the variance of our typical numbers to the variance to the 2021, 2021 school year? Did that play a part in that?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Asa?
So when we did our budget reductions based on the $2 million cut for next school year, we had areas of savings that gave us, in one category, $100,000 that we put towards the Math Academy for next year. If this was such a dire situation, knowing, not knowing that we would have $525,000, because this number seems bigger to me than what we were expecting, why, why weren't we advocating to add more money into that area then, but now all of a sudden it's an emergency?
Because you're talking about in the future, next year's budget versus this year.
But no, what you're talking about now is for next year. It's this year, but it's for next year.
Do you want to say something?
Yeah, I would only say that what you, the board looked at last time we were together was, as they were making those budget adjustments, was our, captured that moment in time when we were trying to, when we made adjustments based on changing needs in the district. And as Ms. Manzell said at the time, and said again tonight, given what was available in funding then, she put forward $200,000. When she and I met this week to talk about, or last week, excuse me, to talk about tonight's request, she was never comfortable, I will tell you, there was never a comfortability with the $200,000, but that was an acceptance of the reality we were in at that time when the board made those adjustments. In light of the changes, we looked at what was available, going back to her original concern that she would have liked to have put more money in last month when we were together, but it wasn't available, and trying to balance that against some existing needs that we had not yet gotten to in instruction, as well as the maintenance projects review that you saw. So this is, this is a change in response to the funding that's available, but if nothing had changed, we were going to have to make it work with the $200,000 that was approved, that we talked about last month, being very uncomfortable beginning the year. That's the situation we would have begun the year with. So the changes in response to the concerns with having the, has been stated, the three months of operating expenses, going on past practice, and one of the things I asked Ms. Manzell at the time was, what do, again, it was already asked by one of the board members, but what do other districts do? How does this approach? What's the best practice? And so I approved this coming forward, because it was based on what was considered, is considered the best way to begin a Food Service account for the beginning of the year.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other comments, let's vote on the amendment. All in favor? Ms. Asa, Mr. Peterson, all opposed. Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Maxine Cattelli, Ms. Guernsey. Back to the main motion. We'll take it to the board. Any, I mean, the public, any, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Jacobson.
This is not for Food Services, sorry. So, Mr. Papa George, I was wondering if we could just get a quick update, I don't know if you're the right person, but just transportation in general, where those accounts are, and was there enough in there, given the variance with extracurricular activities or special ed, or who, I'm not sure who to ask that, but maybe it's you, Mrs. Manzell, just was transportation cool?
Transportation was cool.
Okay, so there was enough, I know, just with different schedules, sports on, sports off, what have you, extra students' necessary needs possibly, just wanted to make sure that that account was viable and functioning.
We saw savings mostly, I think, in special ed, special ed in district and significantly in special ed out of district, transportation.
Okay, and the school accounts and all that for sports or whatnot, or extracurriculars was okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any last comments? Take it to the public, any members of the public comment on the budget transfers? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote. All in favor, Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Ms. Maxine Cattelli, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Guernsey, all opposed. Mr. Asa, motion carries 8-1.
Before we move on, Ms. Manzell, this, I think, may be your last meeting presenting to us. I'm sorry that it didn't go as smoothly as I'm sure you would have hoped.
Hold, Mrs. Manzell, Ms. Manzell knows, she just takes no offense to my questions, right? We still love you.
I have to say, I think this was, yeah, one for the record books.
Ms. Manzell, I'm going to have Mr. Asa give this to you. On behalf of the board, but I'm also going to put it in my Trader Joe's shopping bag, because it's leaking a little bit. What? Pass the cookies around? I know, I know, I know that you're still going to be around, but this, I think, is going to be, well, hopefully for you, your last regular meeting presenting to us. So publicly, I want to just say, thank you for your years of service to this district, to our kids, to our families, but especially this last year, because your job, your already very, very difficult job doubled, I'm sure, maybe tripled in difficulty. So thank you for, for all your support in just moving everything forward, from all the extra PPE to the non-lapsing account, to fast-tracking graduation, to going to so many extra budget meetings and added meetings, and you don't live close, so thank you. I want you to know how much we appreciate you, and we're going to miss you so very much. And we wish you all the best in your retirement, because you deserve to have some fun. So thank you. Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, and so I just wanted to say, as one of the longer-standing Board of Ed members, I remember thinking many times between 2013 and 2017, that I'm sure you wished you were anywhere but in Fairfield, and I'm sure you thought it could never be as difficult as the days between 2013 and 17. And this past 15 months, I think, has probably really tested that theory. And so thank you for those four years, thank you for everything in between, and thank you for the past 15 months.
Thank you. Okay, approval of Superintendent of Schools contract, that the Board of Education extend the terms set forth in the Superintendent's 2020-2023 contract to extend through 630-2024, except the base salary for 2021-2022 will be set at 2% over the 2020-2021 base salary and effective July 1, 2021. The 2020-2023 contract will be terminated and replaced by the 2021-2024 contract. Can I have a motion, Mrs. Maxine Cattelli, seconded by Mr. Peterson? We don't go to the public for personnel matters, so we'll, and we do not have board discussion about personnel matters, so we will take it to the board for a vote. All in favor? Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxine Cattelli, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Guernsey, all opposed. Abstentions? Ms. Pitco, motion carries 8-01. Thank you. Okay, moving on to here, consider and act upon a letter to Governor Lamont. So I put forward in hearing just concerns of various stakeholders, board members. I took a stab at drafting a letter to the governor, just for the public and just for the board. You know, as a Board of Education, we get our authority as a entity from state statute. So we do need to follow the rules and regulations, rules and regulations set forth by the state. That does not mean that we cannot advocate for things that we believe in. Historically, we have not taken stances on items, in part, I think, because it can be very difficult to, to capture a sentiment that nine people agree upon. So we'll take a stab at it. And with that, I will, I will put it out to the board. I think it's important just to, you know, move this forward, that we are not public health officials, but just to move this forward. We're thankfully, after 15 months of very hard work as a community, following the health guidance, getting vaccinated right now, things are looking much brighter, and we're all hopefully optimistic that things will continue that way. So with that, I will stop talking and bring it to the board for any discussion or comment. Ms. Asa?
So first off, thank you, Madam Chair, for drafting this letter and bringing it and putting it on the agenda. I think this is something that's important, and I'm hoping that we can all get behind. I did have some suggested changes, mostly strike-throughs, maybe a couple extra words. Can, do all the board members have a copy of, okay. So I just wanted to go through this really quick. So if you go to paragraph two, I wish to recommend we strike the sentence, "Adults are celebrating while our children, the subgroup least likely to have severe COVID-related outcomes, are left in limbo." Moving down to-
Ms. Asa, we didn't set this forward as a formal motion, just for that strike-through, is there any, let's just take it, any concerns with that strike-through? Okay, seeing none?
Moving down to paragraph four- Moving down to paragraph four, my recommendation is that we strike the words, "Assuming no noteworthy trend in COVID transmission," therefore starting the sentence with "we." So we are asking that the state take the following two steps.
Any comments on this, Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I'm not sure I agree with getting rid of this. I do think it is important to acknowledge that trends could change and we may need to revisit this topic, so I don't really see the harm in keeping this phrase in here and just leaving it as it was in the original letter.
So, just so I can respond to that, I guess, I see what you're saying, I guess my only issue was noteworthy to me was a little too ambiguous. So that was my thrust behind there, but I'm open to what the other board members have to say. But that was my just behind it, not that I didn't believe that, you know, if all hell breaks loose and something goes wrong and, you know, we have to go in that direction, I don't foresee that happening, but my issue was really with the word noteworthy.
Mr. Peterson?
No.
Sorry, Mrs. Gerber, go ahead.
How would significant be?
It would sit better with me.
Okay. Let's--
I'd be curious to see what Mr. Peterson has to say.
Ms. Peterson?
I was just going to say that I have no issue with the strike-through because the first, the number one below it implies that the state could re-impose a mask mandate as, as part of a mitigation strategy. So it's not like we're saying that this, we don't believe the state has the power to do that in conditions that it may deem favorable to mask-wearing. It's already in there.
I, from my, my personal opinion about this is that I would want to keep it in there because I feel like right now I feel comfortable advocating for this, and I'll be honest with the board, I, I struggle with making sure that we're staying in our lane here in terms of what our role is and not trying to make public health decisions. That said, I do feel that, given the low rate of transmission within the community and the access to vaccines, which I, you know, I know that we may differ on the role of vaccines, but from my personal opinion, I think, has helped the situation, it just seems like things are safer. I think that if the numbers were significantly higher right now, I'm not sure that I would have been putting this forward. So I'm comfortable with the language with noteworthy being changed to significant. Ms. Guernsey, did you have your hands up or no? I couldn't tell, I'm frank, I'm--
I didn't, I was just shaking my head a little bit, but I agree with you, thank you.
Okay.
But, Mommy?
Ms. Rotelli, sorry.
Thank you. I agree with Jeff, Mr. Peterson, I think the sentence is stronger without it. So, you know, I don't know if we're going to go sentence by sentence with everything, but I just want to let you know that that's--
I know. Okay. I think that right now, let's just get a sense of where we are and that if we have to make formal motions to amend it, we can. Ms. Jacobson, did you have your hand up?
I was just going to ask through you to Mr. Asa if he was, since he had mentioned that the word noteworthy was, 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 you know, unadmissible to him, if you are happy with the change, if it changes to the significant? Or did you really just want that first preface to be taken out?
Well, obviously, I wanted the whole sentence to come out.
Well, you just said that noteworthy--
Well, you said noteworthy was--
But, but in, in the spirit of getting all nine of us to sign this letter, I'm willing to make concessions.
Yeah, and I, I'm very much in favor of that, that notion. So, you know, if, if keeping it in means we're going to have our fellow colleagues vote for this letter and we can change it to something that you are comfortable with, then let's keep our eye on the goal and hopefully we can do that.
So, Madam Chair, would it be okay to move on to the next sentence? And then we can always revisit this before finalizing. So, paragraph four, second sentence, I'd like to strike the words "in tandem." So we are asking that the state take the following two steps, currently says "in tandem" to protect all Connecticut's children. I would like to advocate for both items one and two, but I do not want them to appear to be dependent on one another, so that is my thrust behind that.
Feelings on striking that? Ms. Jacobson?
I agree with that.
Okay, seeing no opposition to that?
Okay, continuing in paragraph four, number one bullet, my suggestion is that we strike the very last sentence, which reads, "At the very least, given the latest CDC guidance, masks should not be required at the high school level as all students and teachers are eligible to be vaccinated." My suggestion is we just take that out.
Feelings on that? I think everyone's fine with striking that?
Okay, moving on to paragraph five. I would like to strike the words "refocus our advocacy." Currently, the sentence continues to read, "We ask you to provide the reasoning and data behind that decision so we can better inform our constituents. Strike 'refocus our advocacy' and leave in the rest, and continue to support the work of our superintendent and local health and town officials moving forward."
Any objection to striking that? Seeing none? Strike that.
Okay, last but not least, I would like to, after where it says, "Allowing them to see their friends and teachers smiling faces each day is an important step," I'd like to strike "important step" and replace that with, so it reads, "Smiling faces each day is an absolutely vital step in the work we have ahead of us to get each child back on track socially, emotionally, and educationally."
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I prefer the original sentence, I just think this is kind of superfluous, and I, you know, I think that it also makes it sound as if every single child has suffered because they've been wearing masks. And I'm not a mask advocate, I am, I am happy to put my name on this letter, I understand the frustration that many have felt, but I just think to say is an important step is fine, that I think we all, every child in this district has different things that they will need to get them back on track socially, emotionally, and educationally. I'm just not sure if for each child in our district that entails not wearing a mask.
Mr. Asa?
So I would say, this is, well, I understand your point, Mrs. Gerber, but the way I come about this is that, no, it's not every child, and it's not just about the masks. What it's about to me is returning to a sense of normalcy for all children, and that, to me, is a vital step. So this is a component of that. And when I say that, I look at things, and I've, I've changed my tune slightly on this because I will admit, during the height of the pandemic, I absolutely supported the mitigation strategies that we had. We were, this was new to us, but we did adjust in some areas as we, as we learned more. But, you know, for me, in my line of work, working at a major hospital, working alongside emergency room doctors that are seeing exponential increases in young kids and teenagers coming in with mental health issues, has really been alarming to me. And what we once saw was a couple visits a week of suicidal ideations are now being multiplied by actual attempts, and many of these are directly related to the pandemic. Now, while I hope that our situation is Fairfield is not as dire as those cities like New Haven, Bridgeport, Waterbury, Hartford, I feel that this letter is advocating for Fairfield but also the state, and that's just my justification. So not to argue with your point, but I just wanted you to have a little background about where I'm coming from on that.
Anyone else on this? Mrs. Gerber?
No, and I absolutely completely understand that, and I do understand and respect the fact that, you know, because of your line of work, that you have seen a tremendous amount that I'm sure most of us have not. I, I guess, again, I mean, the, the main thrust of this is that we are asking the state to lift the mask mandate. And yes, we mentioned the RLA, but, but really, I mean, the, the major component of this letter is regarding masks. And while I absolutely agree that, you know, every person, I mean, particularly children and teenagers have, have suffered tremendously and there are huge mental health concerns, I just am concerned that we are tying that to masks, and because the thrust of this letter is about masks. And while I am sure that there are many people for whom masks were, are, you know, stressful and, and add to the anxiety that they feel, there's also a bigger picture here that there is the isolation and there's the fear about getting sick. And there are many components to living through a global pandemic that have created this terrible increase in mental health, health issues that we have seen. And my concern is just that because this letter, the, the main focus of this letter is lifting the mask mandate, that just adding this additional language into this sentence is making it seem like that, I don't know, it just, it's making it seem that it's more than the whole of everything that everyone has experienced in a negative way from the pandemic.
I, Mr. Peterson?
I get what both Mr. Asa and Ms. Gerber are saying. I frankly think that we want to be more direct and that the original version is more direct and to the point. So I would, I would not be in favor of this particular addition, I just think the more flower we, we get, it takes away from the directness of the message.
Mrs. Max Canelli?
Okay, and I was disagreeing with Mr. Peterson, I, I liked the end of that sentence. What I did, to Mrs. Gerber's point that I completely agree with, I think we need to make clear that this is much more complicated than just this one request, and I would have wanted to change the word "absolutely" to "just one," that it is just one vital step. But now that's getting into the wordsmithing, but I was trying to find a happy medium between the two. And, but I don't have a strong opinion. I'd want whatever the majority of the board can get behind so that we can make a motion, approve this, and send this off as a statement of this board.
Before you go on, I don't agree with adding this extra language also. I think that it's much more not to minimize the, you know, mental health concerns of our youth right now, but I think it is so much more than just because they're wearing a mask. And I think that for some, you know, I, I also recognize that, for some, I think that they might find safety or comfort in the mask right now. I think it's a very personal decision for some, so I would, I would not want to make it the end-all for all children. I think it's as personal. Go ahead, Mr. Asa.
Okay. And honestly, if, if the will of the board is, is to take this out so we can get a, a letter with nine signatures, then that's fine. It is, it is clearly stating, as Mr. Peterson said, that it is an important step, so I'm okay with that. I just wanted to make a couple other notes. So that, that is the end of my recommended edits. But one thing I just wanted, two things. So one, in, in doing this, I want to be clear that what I want from this and what I advocated in my own personal letter to the governor is that parental choice is still there. So if kids or parents of kids want them to continue to wear masks, that that is absolutely acceptable. So, you know, that, that is a choice, and to your point, some kids may feel more comfortable, you know, that is absolutely fine, and I agree with that. The second point I want to make is, my edits all really had to do with the mask component, but I, I do want to bring up the importance of, of item number two in paragraph four, that, from what I've seen from the state, is very, very disappointing in how they plan to help the students who have or have family members who are medically compromised and vulnerable. And what has come out at the state level so far is words to help them down the road, not now. And I, to that point, in taking out the tandem, I'm comfortable leaving this in here and saying that we are advocating for that, that these kids, there are kids in our district and kids across the state that will need help, they will not be able to come to the school buildings, and how we help them is going to be vital. And whether that be on individual basis, or what would be great would be a state-funded regional RLA, like we've discussed about advocating for. And I'm, I'm afraid that I don't see that happening for next year unless something drastic changes at the state. So I just wanted to put that out there, that it is something I'm very much in favor for, and in supporting the other portions of this letter in no way minimizes my support for those families and children.
Thank you, Mr. Asa. And I think that in, as of some time, I'm, feel pretty safe that this board, you know, supports the need for more support for those, those families who are medically compromised. And we will continue to advocate for that and have discussions just amongst ourselves and so how to support this moving forward. Yep.
So just, just to be clear, so instead of the noteworthy, we're changing that to, what was the word?
Significant.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so if we leave that, opening of that sentence in, just changing noteworthy to significant, can everybody get on board? Ms. Rotelli, sorry. Good.
Going back to the last sentence we were talking about.
All right, go ahead.
Because I know that you want to get a sense of the board to see where we fall, and so I'm kind of counting just with myself because I don't have a problem with Mr. Asa's sentence, and I could even get behind Ms. Maxim Canelli's edit of just one step. That would be three and three. So if we could find out how the other board members feel.
Absolutely. Just for that last sentence, if just important step, or if you want to add Mr. Asa's-- Ms. Pitco?
I'm okay with Mr. Asa's edit.
I preferred it in its original form.
So where we, one, two, three, four. Ms. Jacobson?
Try not to lose the forest for the trees here, guys, but the reality is, I could go either way, but I kind of do tend to-- What? I know, I tend to agree that the fact is, is that we have to get each child back is a little presumptuous in terms of its collective nature, so I would prefer just to keep it the way it is from the beginning.
Okay, thank you. All right, going, all right.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Ms. Jacobson.
And I'm sorry that I didn't submit this beforehand because I just caught it right now, you guys. When we go down to the bottom where it says, "We understand updated guidance will be forthcoming," and then it says, "If the recommendation for mask-wearing remains," however, what we are addressing here in this letter is the requirement or mandate, shall we say? So should that not say, "If the requirement for mask-wearing remains" versus "recommendation?" And if it does, it, I, I think I would might want to change that to requirement. Okay, thank, thank you. So if the--
It isn't mandatory.
Exactly. If the requirement for mask-wearing remains in place, we ask you to provide-- got that? Okay. Cool with that? in place, we ask you to provide. Got that? Okay. Cool with that?
Mr. Peterson?
I guess since we're taking random edits now, I wouldn't be myself if I didn't request that the, in the third paragraph, that the hyphen between year and a job be changed to an M dash, as it is in the final line between expertise and the education of our children. It is the third line of the, I'm sorry, I'm looking at your, at your thing.
Superintendents have shared the burden of being public health officials this past year, M dash.
A job they did not ask for nor train for. It's like the one right below it, in between expertise and the education of our children. There's an N dash, or it's an M dash, I'm sorry.
I think we can all agree on the size of your dash.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Jacobson. That's okay.
Sorry, it's gonna be my last thing. On the remote learning, number two.
Yes.
Knowing that the state is looking at planning for that, or at least looking at it for the 22, 23 school year, should we, I would like to be specific to implement a synchronous state-run remote learning academy for better students modeled on any of the local blah, blah, blah for the 2020, where am I? 21, 2022 school year. Can I say that?
The 2021.
Because they're like, yeah, well, we are, like, in 2025.
Yep.
So just.
Yep. Okay, for the 2021, 2022 school year. Okay. All right. All right, any other
changes? Mrs. Max Canelli?
No, I'd like to make a motion, to make a motion to add, okay, I screw this up every time, but I'd like to make a motion to add this as a motion to our agenda that we vote and approve on this letter, that we empower the chair to send this letter to Governor Lamont.
Mrs. Gerber?
I don't believe you need to add it as an agenda item, because the agenda item reads, "Hear, Consider, and Act Upon." So it's already part of the agenda, so we don't need to add it. It's in our agenda. So we're just going to act on it. So somebody could make a motion to accept it or to move it forward, whatever, but we don't need to do that additional motion to add it.
I wasn't sure if act was strong enough. So then I'd like to make the motion to empower the chair to send this letter to the state, to Governor Lamont.
Ms. Max Canelli, seconded by Ms. Pitko.
As amended, please. Yes, as amended.
As amended. Okay. Take it to the public for any comment?
This is the first Board of Ed meeting I've attended in person, so this has been eye-opening. I've been here so, this is, it's true, I mean that seriously. It's really, it's actually been really nice. I'm obviously here.
Sorry, I know you've done it before, but just state your name and address.
Sarah, No Serena, 529 Davis Road. You were in my driveway one time telling my husband he installed our car seats wrong for five years. He will never forget that.
I thought you looked familiar.
Yes. Thank you for going through this letter with the detail that you did. It's important, not just to me personally, it's important for my kids, it's important for people who feel the same way that I do, that you heard from in an abundance tonight. One thing that, when I read that letter, stood out to me, that I'd like to bring up, is the line that talked about how vaccinated adults are getting back to their regular lives. I think we all know that it's vaccinated and unvaccinated. Vaccination does not seem to have hindrance on adults, whether or not they can go about their business. Yankee Stadium was at full capacity just the other day, no masks, no one has any idea who's vaccinated or unvaccinated. I think that that's an important delineation to make in that letter, because it sets the tone that we are tying vaccination to being able to live their lives, which is not something that adults are tied to. That's something that stood out to me and something that I wanted to bring up. I really appreciate all of the other changes you all agreed to tonight. Thank you for going through it with the detail you did.
Thank you. Any other comments? Can we call the board for a vote? Okay, seeing none. All in favor? Motion carries nine zero. Thank you. Approval minutes at the Board of Education, approve the May 25, 2021 and the June 8, 2021 regular meeting minutes. Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mr. Peterson, all in favor. Motion carries nine zero. Superintendent's report?
Okay, quickly on the district improvement plan update. As discussed at our last meeting, the committee met that day on the eighth. Since that time, we've just had some discussion in central office about next process. As I said on the eighth, there really was questions about how we were going to proceed with the survey. I did communicate to the committee that we're going to take a, kind of a break from the work right now, come back together in July and work on how to formulate the survey and get those surveys out to our stakeholders and the community around the next phase of the district improvement plan. But in the meantime, we also are working on, we've gathered information through the climate surveys, we have information that was in the care survey that was discussed tonight, and we are getting, gathering the data on the APR-ESR survey. And all those surveys, all that information really does help us also inform the work of the district improvement plan. So I'll have, I'll be communicating with the board further updates and the community as we go through the summer. On the teacher evaluation goals update, as well as the elementary enrollment update, I'm going to ask Dr. Zavich to come on up. And he's going to speak rapidly, going over both of these items.
Good evening. James Zavitch, Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. I'll begin with the flexibilities that were put in place for the school year that just ended 2020 to 21. You'll remember back in August, the executive order by the governor allowed for the law essentially to give flexibilities in evaluation, specifically around the goals and the observations, in that teachers can develop them around social-emotional learning, family engagement, and student engagement, as well as academics, if agreed upon by the evaluator and the evaluating. It also waived the final summative rating for the year and moved most of the goals and observations to areas of accomplishment. And many of the goals aligns with our school and district improvement plan for the year that each principal and leadership team had set forward. I will give a brief update on some, on what some of those goals look like in each of those areas. Many teachers did decide to establish an academic goal, or I should say, continue with an academic goal for the year. Just so you see what it looks like for a goal of accomplishment. For example, 80% will meet or exceed end-of-year grade level expectations in reading and math. These were determined by our local common assessments, as well as some of the norm reference assessments. There were other goals in regard to assessing and evaluating reading engagement, for example, reading stamina, enthusiasm, fluency, using the inventories that we set in the district, writing expository texts, teaching about topics, using the new phonics units of study to show transfer in writing skills, and measuring growth in standards on, for example, the equation and expressions units using our initial diagnostic exam. Other teachers had decided alongside with the alignment of the school improvement plans to look at student engagement, one of the other areas that the flexibilities allowed. This included using blood and learning, for example, committing to three collaborative online projects that both allowed for individual and collective works of groups through different technology platforms and instruments that we have, using tech tools to foster synchronous learning for all students in classrooms, and a percentage of engagement in synchronous and asynchronous learning, always 100% of the target, but with a range there as well. The last group here was social-emotional learning. And across the levels, there was a number of different goals for that domain as well. For example, using mindful strategies to self-regulate behavior to be available for learning, both in synchronous and asynchronous instruction. This was developed and assessed by a pre-imposed assessment using the zones of regulation, our mined-up curriculum as well. One other example, development of instructional strategies that would be valued and looked at by evaluators and principals in the buildings to improve connectedness of students, clarity of expectations of learning and engagement. This was done through self-reported engagement surveys, where students would report their levels in engagement at different levels, such as moderate, high, or low. So with that, I'll take any questions on the flexibilities and teacher goals.
Any questions? Ms. Max Canelli?
Just one quick question. Thank you for that. I'd love to hear more detail about it, but I am not asking for that tonight. I love the idea of enthusiasm being measured within a goal and question how that gets done, but that's for another day. I'm only curious about what is the timeline for determining next year's committee work and then vote before the board?
For new flexibilities? So the, the executive order for the current year has expired. The State Department of Ed has reconvened their performance evaluation advisory council to look at reimagining teacher evaluation 2021 and beyond. Specifically, they've offered some new flexibilities from the 2017 guidelines that were voted on. They do include bringing back the summative score, although the flexibility with that score is combining the indicators like goals and parent feedback, and using a holistic measure. In terms of your specific question about process within the district, we would have to go, obviously, a mutually agreed-upon decision through our PDEC committee, as well as the Board of Education. So they would have to read them over, decide to vote on them, as well as the district would have some say in that. And then obviously, it would come to the board for a vote as well to decide if we want to remain with our plan as adopted two school years ago now, or move forward with the flexibilities that the state is allowing for 2021, 2022. So that would have to happen before October 1st. We have to submit our plan to the state, usually the last week of September.
Okay. Any other questions on this?
Shall I move on to enrollment?
Yes, please.
Move on.
Okay. So I know the board has gotten the June 14 enrollment report at this point. I'll just give a brief overview of where we are for the elementary enrollment. We were projected for the upcoming year to have 198 sections. As of the report, you'll notice that there were 194 that were fulfilled. We did run the report today. That did change slightly, and you will get an updated version of that. There are currently 196 sections opened throughout the 11 schools at this point. The two in question, or the two additional, I should say, at this point are Stratfield's kindergarten and third grade, which got two new recent enrollments, which opened up a new section. So that's minus two from the report you have at this point. We are monitoring the one-below's at this point. They currently stand at Mill Hill kindergarten, North Stratfield's second, and Sherman's first. There's also some new enrollees for Riverfield's K. You'll notice Math Academy Grade Four was restored on the grid for Holland Hill, but did not affect the sections there. So with that being said, I'll open up our questions again.
Before we have questions, I just want to put out a cautionary note, that right now, we're at that point in the year where we're getting entries. We'll hit a point in the summer where we'll also get departures. So while a section may be added right now, a section could go back, go back to that kindergarten at Stratfield, for example, and I don't know anything in particular, but two kids come out of that kindergarten, or two kids come out of that fifth grade, and the section number could drop again. So this is a fluid situation, as everybody knows, as we get into, really through August, and then we make the final decisions based on the enrollment at that point, make any decisions around additional sections that have to be added, hiring, and to Ms. Jacobson's earlier questions, supplying resources to those classrooms. So this will be something that we can update the board throughout the course of the summer.
Mr. Peterson?
Thanks. I very much appreciate the comment, Mr. Cummings, that this is a fluid situation. I just wanted to confirm for those Stratfield parents who have raised concerns, that in the case of that fourth grade projection, if two more kids come in, we're opening a third section.
Your question was about the, the fourth grade. Yeah, you are absolutely correct. If we get two or more students and nobody departs.
Right.
That would, that third section would have.
A net plus two.
Yeah, exactly.
Just want to make that clear. Thank you.
So if anybody has a friend with twin fourth graders? Or actually, triplets?
Yeah, I think it's at 48 right now, right? We'd have to go to 51. We need three.
Ms. Jacobson?
Just looking at the projections, so.
Obviously, I understand that this is fluid, and we're going to be monitoring this throughout the summer. But I just had some thoughts on, there are so few sections out of the, you know, almost 200 here that are really, really tight. And I'm not expecting an answer right now, but just food for thought throughout the summer and working with the Health Department. And of course, we don't know what the guidelines are going to be and what have you. I'm just wondering if there is anything that the district noticed in terms of some of our larger class sizes this year versus the smaller class sizes and the distancing and all that. Just some of these sections, I will admit, make me a little uncomfortable, not knowing what we're going into next year. And that's not something to know or do anything about right now. But hopefully, before August, we can have much better understanding of how comfortable you are with the variance of a 16 to a 25 in some of these elementary classrooms, and if there's something that we should do greater about that. Thank you.
Ms. Rotelli?
Thank you. Kind of piggybacking on Ms. Jacobson, do you ever take into consideration the size of the classroom, especially coming out of the year that we just came out of? Because I have been, I'm a former Stratfield parent, and did have a fourth grader with 25 kids in the class, and it was tight in those rooms. They're not big. Certainly, we just took the tour of Mill Hill, lovely, gorgeous, large rooms. That's not what you're dealing with in certain buildings throughout the district. So I was curious to see, as the summer goes on too, if those are considerations that might lend to adding another section if there's just, you know, one kid.
Well, give it, taking out the health considerations aside, it, that wasn't part, room size wasn't part of the board's adoption of these kind of class-size guidelines. So in light of the health guidelines, it's something we could look at.
Right. I was speaking more just because this year has been so much focused on, you know, distancing and all of that. Knowing what I know just from having my kids in those classrooms, and if there were an extra adult in the room, and just how much more crowded that would be, I think it should be a consideration.
Ms. Max Canelli?
Just one last quick point for consideration. I also think it's a learning loss issue, and that when you're looking at a class of 25 and dealing with the teacher, figuring out exactly what state those students are in in the month of September, October, and addressing all of those individual needs, this would be a year where I would be interested in that being a summer topic of conversation, of especially if you can find out from the principal, you know, what, what is the, what are the characteristics of that class? Every grade has a personality and a, and a set of needs. And I'm only throwing this out there way, way early, that there is a possibility that, that there would need to be, and the board would understand that, that going in, this is a situation where we could have done this. I made this decision for this reason, this academic reason, especially because of the year we came out of.
So two cautionary statements. One would be, I would never hire a principal, I would never keep a principal who employed, who if I said to him, "Could you use a smaller class size?" Would tell me, "No, I'll be fine." Right? There's not a, he wouldn't be able to go back to his faculty. He might as well get in the car, leave central office and drive. But I think the other caution, though, is the number, right? When you, when you set a number, and you say it's 25, and if, you know, if now is a 24, is it 23? So my caution here is always that, in light of the adopted guidance that we have in establishing these, and in light of these other conditions, I, I'm just always cautious to step out onto a limb that is getting sawed off continually behind us. So I just, I just raise that as a concern with the number, because if it's, you know, when it's out there and we made it.
And I just want to, and I'm, I'm leaving this with you, I'm only saying I would be extremely comfortable going before any town board in this town, defending the decision for the 2021-22 school year, that with the learning issues that the teachers will be dealing with, that as a one-year thing, that this was a decision made, that would be something I personally would have no problem defending, and I'm just throwing it out there.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any committee liaison reports? No? Ms. Maxim Cannelly?
So, I just wanted to, and I wrote this out, and how convenient. So, I had just wanted to update the board and the community on the work of the anti-racism Steering Committee. It's a group of staff, central office members, and a Board of Ed member, who are working on improving the communication among the various town equity groups and school equity groups, and to guide the direction of the district in addressing various topics. The immediate work of the district is in arranging some professional development for the start of the 2021 school year, 21-22, and that is with a specific focus on giving training for the processes and protocols for administration and staff in dealing with issues as they arise in the future, to give, to empower those individuals to do so. We are looking to get an outside experienced entity to help lead that training, obviously eventually with the goal of, you know, training trainers for the future, but for this immediate school year, we want to rely on experienced outside counsel for that, which the district is in the process of pursuing that. And this group, this Steering Committee, will continue to meet in the school year ahead, probably at our current schedule, which is once a month.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Any open board comment? Ms. Rotelli?
Five seconds, but I just want to say how happy I am that we were able to get that letter out. I know some of us feel more strongly than others, and I'm thrilled that we could all agree on something, and I hope that other boards follow our lead.
Anybody else? Mr. Peterson?
Thanks for High School Graduation, it was a magical time. I enjoyed myself, I think we all enjoyed ourselves, it was a success all around.
Ms. Jacobson?
Just wonderful, happy summer to everyone out there and to all of you guys here. I'm going to miss your faces, but just thank you for the year to all of you as well. So, we thank a lot of people, and I'm thankful for you, and have a wonderful summer.
I was going to serenade you, you know, school's out for summer, you know, clear up the Alice Cooper, right? But echo that, thank you, everybody. We're not, you know, we're not off for the summer, just nice, but the next few weeks, have fun, happy summer, enjoy your families, and thank you, Mr. Cummings, and please thank central office staff, the teachers, and anyone that you speak to for their dedication, their work this year. Mr. Ace is making a motion to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Peterson, all in favor. You're adjourned.